Comment, because I think there might be some. I just want to remind everybody that early voting is open in town. It's important to get out and vote. Early voting is open almost every day between now and Friday, November 1st is the last day. And then on November 5th, the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So please get out and vote. And that is relevant to an agenda item we have tonight. So is there anybody who would like to give public comment at this time? Come on forward and go right up to the podium there. Just to review the rules for public comment, you just need to state your name, your affiliation with the Grafton Public Schools, and what you'd like to say you have about.
Okay, thanks. My name is Carol Erskine. I am familiar with the Grafton Public Schools. My son went to Grafton Middle School, and Grafton was in my jurisdiction. I think as some of you know, I was the presiding judge for Worcester County Juvenile Court for 20 years, 15 of them as first justice. And I have some interest in some of the policies that are new to the Commonwealth, the statutory mandates that are new to the Commonwealth. Wanted to take a few minutes to just let the school committee know about this because it's going to require some updates in the rules. I have the statute with me, so I made copies for people just so you have it if that's okay. Thank you, Superintendent. I'm sure the Superintendent is aware this is coming because I think most people are. But there's a recent change in the law that I think is really essential for the school committee and for the district to know about, and that is, of course, House Bill 4744, which actually expanded significantly with the definition of abuse under the domestic violence law, and actually added a new criteria for domestic violence called coercive control. But the first part of that legislation relates to juveniles and to issues that are common in the schools. And that's related to, that legislation is related to sexting, and how the schools, and how districts, and how the courts need to deal with the subject matter of not only sexting, but more importantly, the issue of what women call revenge porn. But within the statute is, it talks about dissemination, possession and dissemination of child pornography. So the reason I say this, you know, regarding child pornography and revenge porn, is up until the time that this legislation was enacted, which was about maybe three weeks ago, it was signed into law in July, I think it came active in October, just October 3rd, is that it changed the dynamic for how you're supposed to treat children who are engaged in this kind of behavior, sexting. It's very common. So one of the most common cases that I saw within the criminal realm in all my years as a judge, and I only retired in 2023, were kids who were in a dating relationship, and one or both send each other pictures of their genitalia or nudes. And then the relationship breaks up, and all of a sudden it lands in the court. And the only charge that could be made by the district attorney's office in all of this was to charge these kids with possession of child pornography and dissemination of child pornography, which, of course, as a judge, I always thought was outrageous, I'm doing the juvenile court judge, and having kids charged with child pornography, possession and dissemination. You know, it's very different than maybe some cases that we had where older kids were in possession of child pornography that involved seven and eight-year-olds, that was, you know, that were serious issues of child pornography. But this issue that they talk about in the statute, which, you know, was commonly referred to as revenge porn, is really putting kids in very difficult situations. So in Worcester, what we tried to do to divert the case was wipe the possession of child pornography and dissemination off of the charges document, and ask the DA to change the charge to a misdemeanor, something like disturbing school assembly that was happening in school, or criminal harassment, which would be a misdemeanor. And then we could divert it and set out some parameters for the person who was charged, and what they had to do, education programs, probation without programs, in order to sort of end the involvement of the child in the court, because the collateral consequences are so severe, particularly with those charges, but with any kid having a juvenile record. We just didn't want that. And then we would provide redress to the person who was sort of the target of that, because as you all know, and as I'm sure the Superintendent knows, what happens is, they have the pictures, and then they immediately start sending them to everyone, and then it blows up, and usually blows up in school where they all are. And so for a long time, we had been seeking to address this issue with the state legislature, and some of the agencies did in fact address the issue. And so that's going to redefine, I know later you're going to talk about behave, you're talking about policies that you want to keep or not going to keep. I didn't know whether this was going to fall into that. But I did want to say that they are very clear in this legislation that juveniles are to now be treated differently than adults in these cases. And of course, that's a good thing. And it makes it clear, I think that, I'm sure the Superintendent knows, the DESE is going to have to contact all the districts, and they're going to have to recommend what kind of program you can put in place to deal with these issues, which also means that you're going to have to deal with these definitions in your behavior policy, whether it's in the student handbook, whether it's in the parent-student handbook, which I read that section of the handbook today, just to familiarize myself with it. I mean, I think the bullying prevention policy and the cyberbullying policies in the Grafton parent-student handbook, excellent, excellent policies, extremely well-written, very comprehensive, very consistent, I think, with graduated sanctions, you know, depending on the nature of what happened. But that's not the only thing that you're going to be able to have to address. So I think the student handbook and the parents handbook needs to address these issues and state them clearly, because parents have to know and students have to know. So as you can see, the MASOC is ordered to develop and administer a comprehensive educational diversion program for the activity commonly known as sexting. That's what they're referring to, but this is also really about revenge porn issues. The program shall be designed to address adolescents with information about, first, the legal consequences of the penalties for possessing or disseminating visual material in violation of 209D, Chapter 272; two, the non-legal consequences of possessing and disseminating sexual images, including but not limited, the effect on relationships, loss of educational employment opportunities and removal, exclusion, expulsion from school programs, and extracurricular activities, and how the internet may produce long-term unforeseen consequences from disseminating sexual images online. And this includes doing it through texting, you know, sending it to other kids; and four, the responsible use of visual material, digitalization, and five, the connection between adolescent's possession or dissemination of sexual images, and sexual assault, dating violence, and bullying. So when it gives some criteria, as you can see in designing the program curriculum, the Attorney General is to provide research on effective diversion. So I bring this to you because I'm sure, as the Superintendent knows, that it's going to require adjustments in the school policy. I thought it was important for people to know, because I think it's important for parents to know. It's also clear in the legislation that if it's happening in school, or this is part of the cyberbullying policy, there can be referrals to the police, there can still be charges eventually brought, but it goes before the juvenile court, and the program is diverted unless the district attorney's office objects to it, and then a judge has to hear it to decide whether or not it should be diverted. I mean, from my perspective, I'm all about diverting kids out of the system, because the collateral consequences to juveniles are severe. You know, they can't get into certain colleges, they can't get certain loans, it can affect their parents' ability to get housing or to remain in housing. I mean, they're just extensive complications and consequences for kids. And so, you know, my hope is that in Grafton, I think some of the towns around, I don't know, Superintendent, you may know, I think Shrewsbury's been looking at it and maybe addressing it. But it does require, I think, a rewrite of some of the policies to address this and notify parents, hey, here's what can happen, it's right here in the statute. And so I think, you know, the statute provides a lot of guidance, and it seems to me that it can fit quite well into the bullying prevention policy and the cyberbullying policy that's in the parent and student handbook now. Not sure about the committee, since you're addressing student behavior policies in the committee, and I want to thank the Chair for engaging in some conversations with me about this and messages over Facebook as I've been in touch, and I'm grateful for that and providing me with the documentation that I needed to sort of look at what's behind these policies. So I don't, we have a long agenda, I don't want to take up too much of time. I will say, you know, that it's something that, you know, the town or the school might talk to your legal counsel about, or how to shape the policies. You know, since I retired, although I'm teaching domestic violence trainings and revenge porn trainings to police officers, I've been doing it for the Mass Municipal Police Institute for quite a while, and teaching also constitutional law. You know, this is my town, so I'm willing to volunteer my time for anything that you might need or want from me in terms of how to draft these or how it works in the law. I didn't reactivate my law license when I retired, because I had, you know, 20 years of child abuse cases and runaways and sexually exploited children, and I kind of felt like it was probably enough. But, you know, I'm certainly interested in doing advocacy for these kids, and if that means helping out in the town, I'm here to do that. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything.
Well, with public comment, we can't do questions.
Oh, okay.
But thank you very much for coming out tonight and giving us your wisdom and your time, and I'm sure if we have questions, I know Dr. Cummings can contact you, or the members of our policies and committee who may end up working on this would be in touch.
Yeah, I'll leave, the Superintendent, I'll email my number and my email, and if people are looking for help with the drafting of the policies, you know, just to make sure these kids, that the right thing is happening for them, however we're going to do it, I just, you know, want to do it in a way that hopefully can keep kids out of court and diverted. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Carol.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to general business. The first item is a technology update. We have Maureen Malloy, our technology coordinator, welcome.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Maureen Malloy, who became our technology coordinator with Neil moving on, she had big shoes to fill, but it's filled them beautifully, absolutely, done a fantastic job. So thrilled to have Maureen in a different role. She's been with us for a while.
So hi, everyone. Again, my name is Maureen Malloy, and I've worked in Grafton for 14 years. I started out working in the sped department as the AT Assistant Technology, part-time. My kids were young, I was looking to get back in the workforce, and Grafton hired me, and I haven't left. So I've played many roles in the department. I was here when they built the high schools, I helped with all the iPads, and as years have gone on, I've worked really closely with Neil and moved up to central office. So my role has constantly evolved, and now here I am. So just a couple members of our technology staff. Jamie Cardinal is our data coordinator, and if you've ever come up, Jamie sits in the office with me. Paul Mitchell is our mobile device manager. The high school students would probably know Paul, he sits on the second floor in the hallway, and handles mobile devices, staff laptops, student iPads. And his assistant is Patricia Montreal, she's the Assistant Mobile Device Manager. She mostly handles Chromebooks, so she has a little help desk, three days a week, two hours, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, to help with Chromebooks, and that's for the seventh and eighth grade students. And they work very closely together, a lot of cross-training between Paul and Patty. Crystal Lebrun is our digital learning specialist. She goes into the classrooms, helps teachers integrate technology into their lessons, and she's district-wide. Then we have Jesse Delacana, he's our computer tech, so he deals with all the desktops, any kind of systems, setting up new devices, things like new computers. Brendan is his counterpart, and Brendan also does AV, so he does the auditorium, projectors, he's actually digging more into some network things. And then last but not least, Valerie, she sits up here with us, she's part-time, and she helps with a lot of the technology clerical work, the POs, she's wonderful, keeps me on track, setting up, she also helps set up devices, so she does all the unpacking, all the getting the iPads set up into the cases, the Chromebooks ready, labeling inventory. So, and that's the staff. So some of our normal spring, summer technology tasks, obviously MCAS, every year we have MCAS, this year they're changing over to a new platform, Desi is changing over to a new platform, we just got those logins, are just starting to go out this week, some trainings. The November retests are still on the old platform, the Pearson platform, but after that, we'll be migrating over to the new platform. Scheduling, we start between the high school, GMS, we start that, December, that goes on, many meeting dates that go on. We collect the Chromebooks, eighth grade, we get all the Chromebooks, we collect the iPads from the seniors. This summer, we help support the ESY and the enrichment programs, those are all held at the high school. That was a great success, we got such really good feedback on that. And then moving along, the summer, we start with our 10 deployments for ninth grade, we set up the iPads, we have them come to a session, it all, they're, they have their login, so we just go through the setup process of the iPads. And then the Chromebooks, we have distributions of sixth grade Chromebooks, and that is just a drop-by. We set up there at the high school, they come in, they just get their device, they already have their logins, if they need their logins, we provide it. Also, over the summer is just cleaning and getting the district ready. We follow along with the custodians as they go along and do their jobs in cleaning, they let us know, we go in behind them, get the classrooms all back together, the computers cleaned, change filters, get the classrooms ready to go. Then we have our clever with all our applications that we need to turn over. For the Lawrence Power School, on August 1st flips, we have to follow with all the applications to make sure the new school year starts, and all the grades are advanced. Then we have new hires, we set up all accounts and devices for all our new staff. State reporting, seems like it never ends, we're currently doing state reporting right now, we're in the middle of it. And then we have the student demographic update, which is, goes all year for our power school. Some of the projects, we, I'm sure you all saw, we changed, we've got a new website provider called Ed Leo. We were going to do that in July, but we decided to do it a little earlier, just in case there was any issues, and we bought that online in the spring. We signed a new contract with a new internet provider, Crown Castle, they gave us a great rate for a higher speed. Installed the new projector at the auditorium, GHS, I'm not sure if anyone saw a town meeting last night, but I hope you noticed how vibrant it was. We've gotten great feedback. We've helped with implementing Project Lead the Way as the new STEM curriculum, and we helped change the, some of the computer labs, North Street and Millbury Street, going with more of an innovation zone, so we added Chromebooks and iPads into those labs. We've worked closely with Jason Cody in his manufacturing lab, with some new software, and we're getting him, trying to get him up to speed, a large number is really outdated and functioning on old computers, so we're really getting him up to speed and where he wants his lab to be. Like I said, we're supporting implementation of Project Lead the Way, we'll be supporting the PSATs and the SATs next week, and right around the corner is the November retest for MCAS. I just put this in, this is our technology plan, it's on the website, but I just put that in to know we're still working on that, that is still currently active. We are implementing clear touch panels, we have expanded up to grade two, they really seem to, I've gotten such good feedback, they really like them, I'm sure you've seen them in the district, in the lower grades. A sound field system, I've been working closely with Nicole and Chris Kettle in the department with getting light-speed sound field systems. What that is, is some of the buildings will have them in the classroom, in the ceilings, and you'll see the teachers with the microphones, and whether there's a special need or just something that they find in the classroom, the teachers really like it, because you get all the students to pay attention when they're using one of those. So we have ones installed throughout the district, and then we also have portable ones that we call Red Cats, and those are more portable, and they can move around with the student as needed. Some of our network projects that we're working on, some of the big ones was replacing the switching at South Grafton and North Grafton, and I'm sure if you've ever seen a network closet, the big log device with all the wires going in and out, we replaced those switches at those two buildings. We are upgrading our access points, those are, we call them wireless access points, they're full Wi-Fi access, and just as a refresh, as they become end of life, we are replacing them as needed. We are working on the PA system, to replace the PA system at GMS, and we've been told that project could start the end of the month, they're in desperate need of a new, you know, we've been troubleshooting it for way too long, the new system. And we are working on updating our clear pass Wi-Fi system to accommodate all the access points and upgrade our software.
So before we hop into the budget portion, any questions, Maureen?
Questions for the committee?
I have a quick question. Are we doing anything to update access points in gymnasiums? Because when I go into the gymnasiums, like during Scholastic Book Fair, we never, the modems never work, we never have signal, is there any way we can make that better?
So yes, we did, we did the auditorium at the high school, that was always not a great area, kind of a dead zone. So just recently, two weeks ago, we added three new APs, and there was only one in there. So we replaced the old one and added two additional. We've done healing projects at the middle school, that auditorium, and then we've also done projects in the common at the high school, we've increased our access points and coverage.
Any thoughts of doing the lower schools, like the Millbury Street Elementary School?
So as part of the new APs, the 100 APs, we'll be upgrading them throughout the district?
Other questions?
Sorry.
Other questions from the committee first, and then. Okay, go ahead, Maggie.
I had a question about the new digital AP exams, are you guys in charge of helping people set that up, or would that be through Ms. Buckley at the high school?
We work with, we work with Ms. Buckley, exactly, and those will be in the spring?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we helped her last spring.
Other questions? All right, good.
Just wanted to welcome you to the new position, and thank you so much for all the hard work you've done over this summer, and now, it's a busy time of year always. I did notice that you were talking about the SATs, I think it's next week, right? The SATs, SATs, and now that the SAT is moved all digital, you're all set with, feeling good about things, and.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we are feeling good.
Great. I mean, I'd assume it's similar to the MCAS kind of setup, or it's even easier than the MCAS to tell you that, yeah, it's even easier, because the students are a little bit more independent, and they have to log in. Download their blue book in advance.
Blue book, exactly, yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question about the Chromebooks. You mentioned grade six, are we now, we're not doing grade five? I thought at some point that we were going to be moving down to grade five implementation.
So fifth grade, a wonder one, but they stay in the classroom?
They still stay in the classroom.
In carts.
Okay. Okay. And then if people have problems with the website, I think there's some confusion, I've talked to a couple of parents, who are they supposed to reach out to with website issues? Like they can't find something, or like the tech plan link isn't working right, it's, all the short addresses broke, and you guys upgraded?
Oh, I can.
So like the tech plan link that's in the presentation, I just clicked on it to see if it works, I was excited, because I like the short URLs.
Oh, I see.
But they are not working under the new platform. So I guess it's two questions, who do they reach out to, and can we get the short URLs back?
Okay, they can definitely reach out to tech support.
Okay.
The tech support email.
Tech support email, okay.
Or mine, you can give them my email.
Okay.
Malloy M. And I'll definitely look into that for you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And I'll echo Laura's sentiments, welcome. I know you've been here forever, so it's not really a welcome, it's like welcome to our meeting, but you've done a great job.
Thank you very much, everyone. Oh, thanks.
You've done a great job, so I know it's big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you're more than capable. Is it budget time?
I'm doing great.
Yep.
Awesome. So what we're presenting for the FY26 tech budget, again, the disclaimer, this is October, is really, in reality, it's a level service budget. It looks like an increase of almost 25%, but, and I'm going to obviously speak to that, there are three main lines within technology, the support dues and travels is comparatively tiny, so it's really contracted services, and hardware and software. You'll see that under contracted services, that's almost entirely around network, Wi-Fi, and phone services, to keep those three big things going, updated, and working for everybody on a daily basis. That going up, we're going to estimate it at 5%, an increase of 17,485. Hardware and software, we are not making any, we always have to purchase new hardware and new software, and it would look, staying on its own, as an increase of 220,000, we must be buying a lot of Chromebooks or something new. This is one of the main areas where every year, we spend roughly 200,000 out-of-school-choice money that we bring in, goes, is budgeted towards the tech budget. Last year, to get through the year with that one-time, 1.2 million of school choice that we spent out, we spent an additional 200,000 on technology. So we are backfilling, if you will, 200,000. That increase of 220,000, 238 for hardware and software, in terms of new monies, it's just over 20,000. We simply don't have one-time monies to backfill, like we did last year, and we were very open and direct about it, it was a one-year fill of the gap that we had. But now, we have to fill that with general budget funds. That line, no surprise, curriculum and tech software licenses, all of our Chromebooks, iPads, and those Wi-Fi access points that Maureen touched on. So in reality, that's an increase over last year of about, a little under $20,000, so about 5%, just under, I think it was 4.6% of an actual increase, but it's going to look much more significant, because we are taking that, that school choice funding out. In that theme, what I'm trying to explain, we're going to find throughout the budget process, that something's going to look like it's going up really substantially, but that's again, because we don't have the one-time monies that filled that gap in FY25. Any questions on that piece?
Questions from the committee? So I have one actual question, sorry. How do you, I noticed that the hardware-software line includes curriculum. How do you separate that out in the budget, when you, I mean, I know we're just starting this process, I should have asked you earlier, how do we know like what that curriculum is, and what could be elsewhere in the budget, and make sure we're not double-counting that? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I 100% know what you're saying, and it's probably one of the messiest pieces of the budget, especially when we moved from everybody. everybody having the, you know, the actual physical textbooks and all workbooks to now so much of it is software based. Uh, we did make the decision years ago that almost all of it is housed under tech. Like when we get to the standalone curriculum budget, other than consumables, everything else is going to be in tech. So she'll speak to, she being Jen Manion will speak to the apps that we have. When we talk about software, she's going to talk about basically those, those two buckets, if you will. I'd say ninety percent plus is under technology, just because it was so messy keeping it under two, you know, two umbrellas. Um, but it's still a challenge. We talked about it this morning. I don't know how to do it perfectly, other than to be really transparent about it and to address the, the messiness of kind of the world. And tech, when we, when we don't have to use one time monies to kind of bail ourselves out of a, a budget gap. Um, for the last 10 plus years, school choice has been incredibly helpful, especially around technology. We just had a server go down two weeks ago. Um, I think it took years off our, our life, just over a weekend figuring out, you know, what the alarm's for, what happened? And it was our first together run through of that process, but it's not like you can just wait on replacing the server until things turn around. You have to find money and replace it, or we don't have internet. And if we don't have internet as a district, that's obviously a real problem. But as we push on school choice, that's going to come up more and more.
Thank you.
Laura, you're.
I'm good. Thank you.
Good? Anything else? Oh, it's the technology.
Um, in some degree, this is a, uh, repeat what I, I just explained, but that two hundred thousand, uh, replacement of the, the one time funding in twenty-five. Obviously prices for the subscriptions for everything is going up substantially five to six percent, um, if not more of an increase. Uh, hardware, you don't want to obviously, to save money, you can always skimp on that refresh plan, but we, when we first started out and we're just getting into the world of technology, we didn't have it down pat. And we, sometimes the cycle was too long and you had computers that, that didn't work. We had Chromebook carts where we had, we had carts and maybe eight of the twenty wouldn't work. Uh, we've avoided that beautifully. Um, but we've got to really prioritize maintaining that cycle of, of refreshment. And then I already mentioned it, but that twenty-four point nine percent, again, I just want to couch that and, and say it's really more like four point six percent increase over twenty-five. Anything I missed?
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
All right. You guys can go.
Aw.
I didn't have, oh, can I jump in? Jump into F Y twenty-six.
Yes, please do.
I didn't have anything really new. I think I put this as a, a standing topic. Uh, just to make sure we're all on the same page because we're going through the budget process very purposefully and in a, in a quicker fashion than we, we have done in past years. So, uh, we've done special education. We went through technology. On the twelfth and the nineteenth, we'll talk about H R and staffing needs. Uh, Jen Manion will speak to curriculum, which I touched on, and Ashley Paulson will come in and go over the athletic budget. And then we have operations. So Frank and Shauna will come in on the nineteenth with the goal again of for December to have a full F Y twenty-six budget. A preliminary budget before you, after the break, come back. We can revisit that by twenty-six budget, just to get everybody back up to speed and then talk about reduction scenario, if, if that is what. Well, we, we need to talk about it no matter what. Um, and then in February, look to get the F Y twenty-six budget approved by the school committee. So that's the timeline. Um, this is that anticipated gap. I wanted to probably say this at every meeting now. It was a headline, Cummings asks for nine million dollar override. Um, we're nowhere near at that point. You could again frame an override as we have the past two overrides in five-year chunks. You could do three, you could do an eight, you could do a one. Um, there are all kinds of options, but without a doubt, we are going to need an operational override. Going into year six, after the last override that was designed, um, to keep us level service for five years, which it did. And then thi- this I've shown before, um, is basically just a number version of the chart showing that annual anticipated deficit. That's for the entire town, assuming that the schools take the bulk of that. We're just, um, for right now, just running with that number as a deficit. We are certainly going to try to cut some, some physical things, but we're over eighty percent staffing. So it is going to be staff that get reduced and being the eleventh lowest per pupil. Spending in the state, we don't have a lot of that on the bone. Um, certainly. I don't know of a district that they, that could absorb this kind of, um, reduction year after year, uh, but we certainly can't. It would be devastating for sure. And that's all I have.
I did, uh, hear just before the weekend that the anticipated inflation multiplier is going to be under two percent again from the state. So more great news. Got it? Um, so I'm sure M I S E will be issuing some guidance for us very shortly on how to, uh, reach out to represent, representatives and try to clock to them early and try to get that changed. Because last year was, I believe, under two percent also.
Correct.
And I mean, inflation is not under two percent by any means. Um, so it'd be nice if they actually made it match. All right. You good?
Yep.
Thank you, Jay. Next up, um, there's a resolution calling for the passage of question two. Um, I'm going to assume that everybody in the room who has a question to this, but I'm looking at my students and they're nodding. Okay. So school districts around the Commonwealth have already done this. The resolution that is in the packet, um, is one that is largely, um, borrowed from the Worcester School Committee. Um, they actually had their city council pass it as well, which was kind of nice. Um, I did add, um, I did add a section to what they wrote. And that was, um, I'm going to read the whole thing out loud, but I'll point out the one that I added has to do with the creation of the M C A S, what it was created for and how it was created and the fact that we're using it for something that was never, um, never the end goal. And I know that we have some folks here, um, who, who may want to speak and I will recognize you after I read the resolution. Um, so the way I would like to do this is I would like, I would like a motion. And a second, I will read the resolution and then we can open the floor for discussion.
Men?
Yes.
Men, chair?
Yep.
Uh, I move that the Grafton School Committee pass, vote to pass the resolution calling for the passage of question two to remove the M C A S, M C A S, M C A S graduation requirement. Second.
Motion means seconded. And I will read it. Whereas access to a high quality publicly funded education is a guaranteed right written into the Massachusetts Constitution. And whereas the goal of public education is to teach students essential foundational skills such as reading, writing and arithmetic, and to develop critical thinkers, engaged citizens and lifelong learners. And whereas the bedrock of the Commonwealth's world-class public education system is a strong, is strong statewide standards that are uniform throughout our public schools. And whereas lawmakers created the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System, M C A S, and a nineteen ninety-three education reform law that was aimed at improving district accountability and school performance. And whereas the M C A S is significantly limited in its ability to accurately and effectively measure whether students are meeting the Commonwealth's standards and developing the skills they need to thrive after high school. And whereas the most effective measures of whether students are meeting our strong statewide standards and developing the skills they need to succeed in college, the workforce and beyond are educator-led assessments such as projects, papers, tests and group activities that are conducted throughout the school year. And whereas the punitive use of M C A S as a high school graduation requirement has restricted curriculum and shifted the focus of education in our public schools toward meeting a minimum test score instead of fostering an environment of creativity, critical thinking and real teaching and learning that helps students realize their full potential. And whereas pediatricians, researchers and school counselors have warned of the severe impact of high stakes testing like the M C A S graduation requirement on students' mental health and wellbeing. And whereas standardized test requirements notoriously stack the deck against students of color, E S L students, those with learning disabilities. And whereas using the M C A S testing as a high school graduation requirement has prevented or delayed thousands of students from earning a diploma, thereby interrupting or derailing education or career plans with especially harmful impacts on students of color, low income students, students with disabilities and students for whom English is their second language. Therefore, let it be resolved that the School Committee of the Grafton Public Schools supports passage of question two on November fifth, two thousand twenty-four, to remove the M C A S graduation requirement and require only the district certified that students have satisfactorily completed coursework demonstrating mastery of the skills and knowledge required by the Commonwealth's strong statewide standards in order to graduate. Comments or questions from the committee?
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
First, I'd like to thank you, uh, for taking this on. I think this is wonderfully written. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the outreach of, um, the G T A, um, asking us to support this. I strongly support, um, voting yes on this resolution. Um, I think this outlines it really well, but in particular how the M C A S really, um, marginalizes students who, um, are low income, uh, students of color and have, um, just disabilities. I've seen some comments about how we're just pushing, what about pushing kids through? All of that is, I think, nonsense. I think if we're trusting our teachers to teach and we put so much pressure on them over the years, we expect so much of them. But then we don't, uh, give them enough credit to graduate children. Um, I think we are doing our educators a disservice and our students a disservice. Um, and I also think, I don't think people really understand the harm that this test caused. Um, I will share, I don't know if I'm supposed to, but, um, I've been chair of this committee four times. And one of the privileges of the chair is you get to sign diplomas. Um, over the years, I have signed many certificates of achievements. Not any, every student that walks across that stage that you see actually is earning a diploma. I don't know the whys and how they didn't, but I suspect some of it is because they couldn't kept, pass a test. Um, and who knows why they couldn't pass a test in tenth grade and then in eleventh grade when they have to do the retesting. Um, I think it's nonsense and I, um, really hope that people, uh, will vote yes. And that was very long. So thank you for letting me speak.
Any other comments, questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to agree with Mrs. Austin on that. I'm not going to repeat everything that she said clearly. But I wholeheartedly agree and I definitely support voting yes on question two. And in fact, thanks to Mrs. Ma, I've already early voted yes for question two. And I recommend you all go out and early vote. So thank you so much, Mrs. Ma.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I am a vocal supporter of not using standardized tests as a sort of a benchmark for anything. So I'm a big fan of this. As someone who is an amazingly good test taker, I can say that I've gotten lots of great advantages because I'm a great test taker. And that's not fair. It's just not, it's not because I'm good at things. It's because I'm a good test taker. And, um, I don't think that anyone should be analyzed for not being a good test taker. I think you should be evaluated for your actual skills. So I am very excited to have also already voted to.
How about our student, oh, I'm sorry. How about our student representatives? Anything you'd like to say?
I have any questions?
I like, totally agree with all the points. I have like a few questions.
Go for it.
So it would just make it just the graduation requirement so people would still take it?
At this time, yes. Still have to take it.
If they think it's important, like know how to take a standardized test, only in preparation for like S A Ts, the S A Ts, A P exams, just like the setup of it. And also like in Grafton, I mean, you don't have like a number, but you know how many people like on average agree don't graduate because of this?
We're, we're very fortunate that the number has been very small. The number that I do know is that statewide, it's around seven hundred. And that's about to go up because the minimum score here is, you're a junior now, right? So you, your class has a higher minimum score to me. And so when we see these, the, the November retakes are coming up, there are going to be more students doing that because they didn't need that minimum score. Um, something that I learned through this process is that there are jobs that you cannot get without a high school diploma. And I was completely unaware of that. Um, that to me is shocking that not only can you not go to college or even a trade school, you can't get a job. Um, what are we even doing at this point? Like, all right, I'm not gonna, sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you for your questions. Do you have one? You got me going, Delaney. Megan, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, make a comment. I really appreciate, uh, you sharing the background because I think there's a really high misconception, uh, where people think that M C A S is used to evaluate specifically teachers and students. And it's really more about the macro scale of districts and statewide and federal oversight. Um, and I think selfishly, a lot of people think that because it doesn't affect them, it doesn't hurt people, but, um, it really does. And through, um, all the standardized tests I've taken in my life, I know that I'm at an advantage because of Grafton. And a lot of districts are not as fortunate as we are.
Yes.
I did have, I think.
Go for it.
Um, so yeah, I think it is important. Yeah, they're still going to be taken. Um, I, I think your point is right, Delaney. It's good to know how to take a standardized test. I was thinking back to, um, years ago. I can't remember what they, remember they were going to change it? We went through all those trainings. What the heck was the name of it? Do you remember? Park.
Oh, yeah.
Teachers in the back. Thank you. So, yep, the park. And I remember going through all the, going through a bunch of trainings and I, I remember a teacher from Somerville shared how in their room they had on the thing, first day, we're going to crush M C A S. And how disappointing that was. And that's how, and I think you said it perfectly, Megan. I mean, you described the human race perfectly, that when it doesn't affect you, people don't care. Um, and that we're very fortunate in Grafton. So this is a little bit beyond Grafton too, and it's thinking of others. Um, and, um, that's what I wanted to say was, I'm just going to bring that up in the next, when we talk about the resolutions about Park. Um, and what a, what a disaster that was and waste of money, time and ridiculousness. I can't, couldn't even remember the name of it. Locked it out.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? I know we have some teachers here. Come on up. You want to sit at the table instead of using the, yeah, that's fine. What? Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
And reaching out.
Thank you.
You can just introduce yourselves.
Uh, I'm John Loyds. I'm co-president of the Grafton Teachers Association.
Hi, Karen McCune, grade, um, grade two teacher at Millbury Street School and co-president of Grafton Teachers Association.
Ben Roy, Mass Teachers Association assigned to rep.
Uh, so, um, we, we are here obviously, um, to, uh, support the resolution that you have before you. Um, I think it is well-written. There's not a lot I can add to it, including your public comments and, and students' comments on this. Um, you know, I, we believe that, um, students are more than a test score and ultimately, um, you know, supportive question two really shows that that's, that's how we feel as an education community. So, uh, we appreciate you guys, uh, taking forward this resolution and considering it this evening.
Questions for our teachers from the committee?
I have a question. How do you feel about M C A S not in relation to a graduation requirement? Do you enjoy, do you think it's good that the kids take this test or not?
I, I think you've, uh, really, you know, this is now my personal opinion. Um, I, I think that, that the, you know, taking a test and, and, and practicing different, um, means for, uh, basically allowing people to understand what you know is, is reasonable. Um, you know, I think that the challenge is, uh, because it's a, it had been a graduation requirement. Uh, lots of teachers felt pressured and, and felt like they had to adjust their curriculum to teach to a test as opposed to teaching to the whole student really.
Right.
And again, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah.
I think even at the lower elementary grades, taking the test is definitely, you know, a, an opportunity for practice. And, you know, we have to take assessments for math and we're taking assessments for foundation, you know, so, you know, just that additional practice is certainly important.
I taught for twelve years, so I, I can speak to this not just as a union guy. I, I don't hate the idea of a test as a whole. I hate what they've tied to it, both individually and district wide. Because if you look at the scores and you put the socioeconomic status of the town next to it. of the town next to it, I mean, they pretty much mirror each other. Low scores equal low SES and so on, so I don't know why we're stealing money from schools that are struggling when it should be the opposite, but that's, I guess that's next. That'll be the next thing we come to you in a couple of years.
Stay tuned for our next agenda item. There's something in there about that.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I was going to, who was first?
I was, go ahead.
I was just going to ask Jay a question, so if I'm going off, and I'm putting you on the spot, so I apologize. I know the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association, they came out against this, and I just couldn't quite grasp it. I don't know why, do you know why, Amy? Or do you guys know why? And it seemed odd to me.
I was surprised MASC came out in favor and MASSS came out against in their sister organizations.
Yeah, MASC came out in favor, the teachers' unions have been very, and I was, if you don't know, that's fine, I can probably Google it and...
I can, I can speak to it a little bit.
Yeah.
It was a good two pages, maybe even more, it's quite lengthy. I took it as that they were saying that the test as a whole has a value, worried that by not having the graduation requirement, you are watering it down or you're lessening the importance of MCAS. I'm probably not doing it justice, but it was a lot of, I think I can say with a pretty high degree of certainty that, I can remember a piece of it being, we're not necessarily, and I'm paraphrasing, we're not necessarily against it not being a graduation requirement, but something else has to be built into the system in terms of readiness to graduate.
Okay. I'll keep my further comments to myself. Thank you, that was well said, thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Oh, I was just going to give my own personal opinion on the MCAS, which I'm probably going to get some heat emails about.
Do you want to wait until we get to the MASC resolution about the MCAS overall?
No, just kind of, okay, whatever. I'm not a fan of the MCAS, I'm not a fan of the MCAS for little kids. I've seen fourth graders crumble at the thought of going to school for the MCAS. I wish that more parents were aware that the MCAS is optional for children to be taking in the classroom, and that we didn't have kids in second grade and third grade and fifth grade too anxious to go to school because they've been, have so much pressure that's been put around it, whereas like with the STAR exam, they just show up one day and they take the exam and they get a relative meaning as to what their standing is. So, personally, I'm not a fan of MCAS.
Madam Chair, I'm going to follow up on that, though I feel like, and this is obviously classroom to classroom difference, but I feel like the message that our district, and I'm hearing it from other places as well, is sending out is that like the MCAS is not that important, like, it's a day at school. And that makes me feel a lot better when I get those scores and I talk to my kids about them, it's like, okay. And then we sort of move on. I love that we have the STAR testing, and it really gives you multiple ways to be looking at similar information, and it feels so much more valuable to me. So, I hear you, and I agree, but I also, yeah, yeah, I think our message is hopefully making it less stressful for younger students as well.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Speaking about a letter I read a few weeks ago, and calling it up about the statement from MASSS, the former, or the executive director of Mass, added, "Unfortunately, question two presents only two options, a current statewide graduation requirement or no statewide standard at all. Given those choices, we advocate for the core."
But that's factually incorrect.
I'm not going to, I'm not arguing with you, trying to make sure I'm real clear.
We do have a statewide standard.
Right. Isn't that what we teach you?
Yeah, the Mass Core.
And I'm just so perplexed.
There's a legal, there's a law around civics, and there's a law around, what am I going to say, is it phys ed?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Phys ed and civics, and there is Mass Core.
There is Mass Core.
Um, question for our teachers, though. So, one of the arguments that I've heard against this, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, so, you know. The top Center for Policy Institute, or something like that, put together a white paper, and in that white paper, they talk about their fear of a race to the bottom, that districts will start to change their individual district-wide requirements and make it so easy for kids to graduate that the end product will be far less than what we have now. And I'm seeing your face, so I'm guessing your reaction is similar to my own, but could you just talk about this concept of a race to the bottom and, like...
Well, I mean, what first comes to mind is rigor. So, we're constantly looking for programs that offer rigor in the class, even at second grade level where I teach. So, I don't, I just, I feel as though, you know, teachers, we hold ourselves to a high standard as well. So, we're constantly reflecting with our students, with, you know, on our own time during meetings, on, you know, what's working, what's not working in the classroom, and I certainly don't feel as though we're going to strive to be, you know, working at a lower standard.
I would agree.
Madam Chair, can I just, I guess, one thing that's just perplexing to me, so I think about like all the other grades that take the MCAS, where it doesn't ma, like, doesn't matter. Like, I think about years ago, our fifth grade MCAS in, I think, math came back and they were not as high as we'd like to see, so we checked in, we said, "What's going on?" We looked at it, we put in more resources in, like, we used it as a tool. So, I'm just, I'm confused. All this is just taking away, I feel like I'm constantly feeling confused, is the kids in 10th grade who have to take a test to graduate, and then my kid, not in this, he goes to BBT, we haven't even gotten his scores yet. So, let's just say he hasn't passed yet, it's already like end of October, we go into, you know, like, what in the world? Like, I don't understand, we can still use it for what it was meant to be, which I think you wrote.
Although I would say that somebody mentioned the STAR assessment earlier, I personally, and I'm sure the teachers have a comment on this, I feel as a parent, like, the STAR assessment is much more useful. It's so much quicker, we don't have to wait almost a year to get the results, and it's individual skills, it's not this question, that question, like, that doesn't tell me if my child is ready to graduate. The STAR assessment tells me that my child is ready to move up a level in whatever the subject area is, and I have to say, now that I have a junior, I kind of miss that, I really don't know what's going on. But I'm hoping when we hear from Jen Mannion, I believe it's next meeting, maybe she can speak to, "How are we using the MCAS now that we are in year three of STAR? And what is the MCAS actually able to tell us that STAR isn't?" Because I don't know the answer to that. I don't know. That wasn't your question, but that's from my brain.
And you think, I'm sorry, I didn't, you think about what a portrait of a graduate is, though, too. Like, if you're going through your math, rigor, or whatever, you know, it might be different levels for different people, too, and you can graduate high school not having to take calculus and be a functioning person in society, a well-functioning person in society. Many people. Many people. You can, you know, you know what I mean? Like, you can do, you should have, there's different paths. We talk about, I mean, we talk about art, you can get your, you know, you can do so many different things in life without being, you may not do great, I just, I'm going to shut up because I'm not helpful.
Also, I mean, it is also a large use of instructional time, there's a big chunk of time to take to do it, so it's sort of like, look at that, we could just deal it back.
But that's not, it's not going to change.
I have big dreams.
Oh, you can have it, that's great, that's great. Any other comments? Do you want to say something?
Delaney. A comment about the difference of like STAR testing and MCAS, as someone who's taken both of them. I do feel that the STAR testing, since it's all multiple choice, and like you don't write it all, it's not as representative of like me as a student, because I'm a very like writing-heavy person, and I feel like I let my, my boys show and write versus just like A, B, C, A, D for like 100 questions. I don't know, like, I really don't know the answer, what comes more accurate, but like, I do think there's a lot of like pros of being able to write and like express yourself versus just doing like a bunch of multiple choice, so that's the reason it gets back same day. I don't know if that's still representative, like, plan over the year.
Well, I guess what I would, what I would say to that is that the reason that we use the STAR is it's designed to give us a quick snapshot of skills, those particular skills. Your writing skill is being measured in other ways, right? So, whereas the MCAS is supposed to give us an idea of, "How is the district doing?" That's the original intent. "How are we doing overall? Where, you know, where are our areas of weakness, and do we need the state to come take us over?" Like, that's what it was designed for, and it's become this, you know, cudgel unfairly being used against students that just didn't have a good day, and some kids, you know, they could take it five times and not pass it. So, that's really what we're, what we're getting at, and maybe someday, it'll look different. Maybe someday, if we do our advocacy right, there will be something else in its place. And I mentioned, I mentioned STAR just because as a parent, I got much better information about my student, and it's throughout the year. Somebody said, "You go into school and you take it," and, you know, there's no, there's no repercussion, there's no, you know, you have to stay after school because your STAR assessment was, was poor, you know? The teacher knows, "Oh, you need some extra help on that." So, that's what I like about STAR. You're right, there's room for both. It's just, we don't want to see MCAS eating kids from birth. All right.
Oh, sorry.
Go for it.
What I love about STAR is that you don't have to fret for it, it's so great, you walk in the class and your teacher's like, "Oh, we're doing survey," and you just do it, and then you don't, if you don't want to underscore, they don't tell you it, so, because if you do, you have to like ask your parents or something, but if you don't want to know, you don't have to know, and you get to go on. And I also think the notion that we need MCAS as a graduate requirement really underestimates students and the drive to learn, because, like, we do want to learn stuff. And if we're at school all day doing work, that doesn't mean we're not going to know anything if we're not being tested on it.
I think it underestimates our teachers, too.
Hmm.
Okay. Have you got one?
Yes.
I think we, I think the horse is on the floor.
It's so dead.
Nope.
All right. All right, all those in favor supporting the resolution to pass question two?
Hi.
All right, motion carries, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Great discussion, thanks for coming out. Stick around for the next agenda item. If you have thoughts on any of these items, we would be happy to get your feedback. Is it everybody? Can you check the sound? We're getting reports that the sound is scratchy or somehow. Thank you, Kristi. I get it. I got it. we have to elect our delegate to the, to the meeting, to do the voting. I would like to volunteer as tribute, as this will be my last opportunity to do so, and I don't think anybody's going to fight me for it. So, would the committee like to appoint me as the delegate?
I would like to appoint you.
I second that, I guess, I don't know.
I move to appoint Amy Ma as delegate. I second the motion, is it the motion? Yes, yes.
All right, is there somebody who would be willing to serve as a backup?
What day is it?
It's the Friday of the conference.
It's Friday, I can be backup. Okay. I can't be backup because I have a division meeting.
I guess we need to vote now that there was a motion, so, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you. I'm so excited.
Thank you.
You know I live for this stuff.
I volunteer to bring you refreshments.
I may need that, I may be calling you, "Bring me a wine."
If needed, I will deliver some wine.
So, I guess there's a lot of these, and I didn't know what the committee's pleasure might be. We certainly don't have to take a position on all of them, we don't have to discuss all of them, we can take them out of order.
Well, like, MASC said you could take one and two as a single measure.
One and two as a single measure?
Yeah.
Yes, we could do that. We could take them in groups. The second group is student safety, the third group is school finance, we could do them that way if the committee would like to.
Yeah, and we could. I think we need to go back and talk about it.
All right, well, why don't we start with, why don't we start with the group one, student achievement, while we have our students here? So, the first resolution is development of an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS. The second one is to increase the compulsory attendance age, and those are two very different things, but I'm happy to open the floor to anybody who has thoughts, questions, concerns.
My only, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes, Kristi, yep.
My only concern in regards to the dropout rate, I listened, well, I read the resolutions, and then I listened today to the MASC luncheon that they did about it, and I kind of agree, the dropout age rate, it's going to go from 16 to 18, that's what they're proposing, and the question would then become, how do you deal with teen pregnancy? Like, what services would be needed within the school system, if you're getting kids that are dropping out due to that, or, so, it just raises that point. I am in agreement that the age should be 18 as opposed to 16 because, you know, you're more likely to tell, the parent could tell the kid, "You've got to go to school, it's the law, it's required," but it's just that there are going to be services around that.
I wanted to, if there's other representatives of the committee, your thoughts before I ask Jay?
Um, no, I was just thinking, you can get pregnant before 16.
Yeah. Jay, I wanted to hear your thoughts on this.
Yeah, I'm very much in support of 18, and we, it does, that scenario does play out occasionally, and we do provide services and work through it, around it, et cetera.
How, how would an increase like this impact the staff? What, like, our dropout rate is extremely low.
Very low in that situation that we brought up, it certainly can happen, but not at a rate. Like, that question or thought is a very good one, larger, in Worcester, that's got to have a significant impact, where the impact would be incredibly minimal, if, if at all for us.
Any other thoughts? You don't seem to feel extremely strongly about this one?
I don't. I wouldn't be against it.
I think it's a good idea. But I, I will say, because I was representative last year, and this has nothing to do with this resolution, may I say something?
Go for it, thank you.
And I, I think this is more probably for Kristi because she hasn't been to the conference before, but there were some things that we talked about in the meeting, and we're like, "Yep, this is how we feel," and then someone got up and said something during that meeting, and it was like, whoa, that really changes sort of the way we think about it. So, I feel like there, there could be things that I'm not thinking of that apply to something like this that could make me feel more strongly, but currently, I feel like this evidence makes sense to me, and I'm a, I'm a fan of it, so, that's...
And I think that's part of delicate.
Yeah.
We trust you, you know us fairly well.
Yeah, somebody comes up and gives a crazy amendment, you know, I can, I can just abstain from voting if I think it's going to be, you know? And that has happened.
Right.
Crazy amendment, I'm not going to vote on that, so.
Yeah.
All right, so are we in general, I don't think we need to vote on these, but are we in general in agreement to pass these two?
Yeah.
That's a yes.
Yes. The first one I have a little, I mean, I just don't want to go down another part.
You don't want to spend another $200 million to develop a test that doesn't work?
I don't, I'm a little stronger on that, but I won't be, I know.
I hear you, and I feel like...
That was a disaster.
It was a disaster, and, you know, somebody asked me recently, you know, "How much do we spend administering this?" And the last number that I could find was 34 million, and that was during COVID, like, the one right after COVID ended, so it's got to be more now. So, $34 million statewide is spent on administering a test that has obvious issues with it, and how much more are we going to have to spend to fix it? I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I, my, for me personally, I think that the people who need to fix it are the educators. I think one of the biggest problems with the MCAS is that it's being administered by people who are not educators, and they don't understand a lot of the inequities that exist within the exam, so. I don't want to spend any more money out than we have to, though. All right, can we move on to student safety? There are two resolutions, one is on safe storage of firearms, and I think we've seen this one before, and then the second is... And then the second is on school bus arm, bus stop armed surveillance and enforcement penalties. Any thoughts on these?
I support both of these. I support them both personally.
My, I, I, my question on resolution four is where the, we, you know, we outsource our, our school buses, like are we paying for those? Where, how does that work financially, logistically? Cause they're not our buses. So that's, that's sort of my.
It seems like something that would have to come from the bus companies, right? If that resolution went through, that would be a bus company requirement then.
Right.
But it would trickle down.
It would trickle down. We would end up paying for it. Exactly. So that's sort of.
Probably through an increase in the cost.
You have a resolution that talks about the bus fees and stuff as well.
That's my only feeling on that. I agree. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Having been through the safe storage of firearms discussion in the past, I will say that what will inevitably, if it is defeated, what will inevitably defeat it is that the idea of it being overreach for school districts. To have anything to say about it. However, given the impact that firearm safety has on our schools in 2024, I don't, I don't think I necessarily agree with that. So.
I, I think they've watered it down too. Cause I remember speaking out, like I was concerned about it and I remember thinking, I can't believe I'm concerned about this. But they've watered it down a bit and um, I think it's the number one killer. Yeah, it's the number one killer. I bet more kids are killed by firearms than school, but people, you know, not stopping for school buses. So.
All right, are we generally in agreement on those two then?
Hundred percent.
Yes.
And students, if you have something to say, please.
Oh, I actually, um, I wanted to share my opinion on resolution two.
Oh, we can go back.
Okay, I feel pretty strongly about that. I have noticed how hard it is for people to come into school since COVID. And I know we've all talked about how like those numbers have increased in recent years. But I just want to emphasize how um, it's not the same as it was like fifty years ago if you didn't get a high school degree. Cause you could still have a very successful job and not to say that you can't now, but it's much harder than it used to be. And I also want to emphasize how our brains are not fully developed where people can definitely, um, once you reach that age of like twenty-five, someone might have dropped out and say, oh wait, I really regret this. So yeah, just something I would like you guys to consider.
Thank you. All right, so we are in agreement on. Yeah.
He's just going to check the volume because there have been reports now of no volume.
Oh, no.
Well, if I have to work with Rebecca to put some minutes together, I will do that.
I can't. Should we record on our phone? Perhaps?
This is where we close.
Oh, we got a thumbs up. Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
And thank you to everybody who's been trying to get our attention. We're really not supposed to be on our phones.
I would like to add, I said some really smart things that you may not have heard.
Should work, right? Okay, resolutions on school finance. There are three? Yes, three. Resolution five, aligning the tax authority with the required local contribution. Resolution seven, fully adjusting chapter seventy-eight for inflation. And this is the thing I was talking about earlier, that it's going to be under two percent this year. So that's not, that's not helpful. Um, and then number eight is equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs. I don't know that we're necessarily in that group, Jay.
No.
I guess we're not. But you know, we, we advocate for everybody, right? Any thoughts on those three?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
On number five, I don't, I don't support this one. This, this feels like a scare tactic. It doesn't seem like it's anything that would ever, I mean, to get the legislation on this, like, even when I listened to the luncheon from MASC, I, I just, this just feels like a scare. This isn't, the, the, it doesn't seem like anything that could potentially come to fruition.
Well, I will say it's not new either. It's not new. This is something that people have been talking about for a while now. Increasing the levy limit. Allowing housing, increase the levy limit. It's kind of what we do when we do overrides, right? And that's kind of what we're doing. So allowing us to increase the levy limit would get rid of overrides. And allow us to raise the funds needed. Now whether, whether or not, you know, you think that's a good thing. I, I personally, I don't necessarily think it would pass. I think what we're saying is go advocate for that. Because the more options we give the legislature, I feel like the better, the better we are. But that's my personal opinion on that.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So just thinking back of past resolutions, so um, about ten years ago, the millionaire tax was a res, an MASC resolution and that took obviously a long time and also didn't work out quite as we hoped, but it got passed. So um, I, I'm kind of for MASC starting to work on changing how we're getting funded. Because three overrides in ten years where, you know, I, I just, I'm frustrated. So I think that, I agree like with Chris, I don't think it, this isn't, this is going to take years if it happens. But I'm not against advocating for doing something about Prop two and a half, like, it's just not working anymore as a funding mechanism.
For how old it is, Prop two and a half's from the eighties, right?
Eighties and nineties.
I think Mr. Oftin knows. Mr. Oftin? When was Prop two and a half passed? Do you remember? Eighties? Eighty, there you go. I knew you'd know. Thank you very much, Mr. Oftin, nineteen eighty-three. Um, so it is, it is a bit of an outdated, and I apologize for calling you out like that. I hate it when that happens to me in these meetings, but I think you'd know. It, you know, it, it's just frustrating that the model, the, the basis of, of how we're, we're funding our schools is, is this, this limitation. Forty years old? Thirty years old? Thirty years old.
But this just seems like, this isn't, this, this number five here, this resolution number five, feels like a scare to get the chapter seventy changed rather than, they don't really want this. So.
I don't think it gets to the underlying issue, but it does. Yeah, it's sort of a, a Band-Aid in the meantime, which is not.
It's, it's a bold stroke, but it's not a unique stroke. And I personally said in a meeting two years ago, where we talked about this, letting, letting local communities change their, their levy limit. Because some communities have this need and some communities don't. And it's not fair that we're, we're held to that standard. But, I mean, you're free to vote however you wish. Would you prefer to take this one on its own rather than vote in a group?
Sure, yes.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we um, we're not really voting. You're right. So we're, we're, I'm going to write three, three, one. That's my sense.
In the end, it's up to you, Amy.
Yeah, it's up to you, Amy.
Um, what about the others in that group?
I agree with those.
The rural school districts, I'm like, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, MASC's been taking a big push for rurals because they've needed it. Hopefully you can move them.
And number seven is a huge yes for me. We need to hold. But I, I don't know that they're going to be able to move quickly enough for this fiscal year. So I think we're going to need to do some advocacy on our own. We need to talk to Senator Moore and Representative Meridian and say, look, under two percent is not going to cut it. We need help. Um, and the equitable funding for non-regional school districts, any objection there? Again, not us. Happy to raise my hand and help another school district. Okay. The next group is vocational and technical school group. And there's only the one. No, no, there's two, I'm sorry. MSBA grants evaluation for chapter seventy-four. Which I think would impact BBT. And we also send students to the Aggie, um, which I can never remember the right name of that school. Norfolk? We have like a single digit number of students in our district that go here. And then resolution ten is expansion and capacity in the vocational technical programs. I think the second one is good in theory. It sounds good. I mean, we, obviously there's a, there's a need for more seats in these schools. I don't necessarily agree that this is how you get there. I think that there are some changes that could be made to admission procedures that would address those needs. But I do agree that there are more, there are more students who need a vocational technical education that are not able to get one. Um, and you know, the, the promise of the VOTEC schools was that, you know, public high schools could, you know, phase out those types of programs and then the vocational technical schools would take care of that education and then they just can't. There aren't enough seats. Um, they're not admitting a lot of the students who need.
They're incredibly competitive.
It's very competitive and, and it just seems so odd. I mean, there's definitely areas where it should be, don't get me wrong, but.
It's sort of flipped on its head.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, in a wonderful way in some ways, not to, you know, not to discount what they're doing by any means, but.
And in other ways, it's becoming college prep.
Yeah. Right, there are some students who really need those programs who are not able to access them.
And they have the ability to like pick and choose who they.
Right.
Who they accept.
Yeah.
Like.
I, I, yeah, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those things when you run a school committee and you have thoughts about that, it's, it's not within our purview, but it impacts our district.
Yes.
There are kids that we would like to see have access to that education that, you know, that they can't and we can't afford to have those programs here in district. You know, I think we do a fantastic job with what we do offer. The manufacturing program is an example of that. Computer science is an example of that. But we're very limited. We can't offer an amazing array of that type of stuff. We're even really of, of very much in depth in those areas. And those are the students, that's what they need. And I do think they could do better servicing students with IEPs if they have a force. Um, I don't think that they're doing a great job there. So. Because they're able to control their missions. And that was a shot across the bow.
They do have strong IED.
Yes, I just think.
Yeah, but.
I'm not talking about one school in particular either.
But I agree with you for sure.
All right, are we generally in agreement on nine and ten then?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. What do we want to do about the expiring resolutions? I'm, I'm still unclear as to whether or not we're revoting on those? Some of these I voted on.
Yeah, I was confused on.
It sounds like we have to approve them again because they're expired.
That was the impression I got as well, that it had to be revoked.
Are there any that, are there? I have seen all of these before. And I have voted yes on all of these in the past. And Laura, you have voted all of these in the past. Are there any that people don't think we should approve? The, the position of the district in the past having been yes? Menstrual supplies. Sorry.
Banning polystyrene from school. Just kidding, we should not.
As we, as we begin, as we begin composting in our habitats. I'm not even touching that. I assume we are still a yes. No, let's go back. How's the sound doing? Anything anybody objects to?
I don't have an objection. I just had a comment about the menstrual, menstrual supplies. That's been an ongoing issue at the high school for a while. The big civic project that we have to do, um, junior year, a lot of people have tried to get them into the bathrooms at the high schools and it just never takes. So I think, I think we might have some in the machines, but they're not advertised as well and it's, and then also people were trying to get them into like the gender neutral bathrooms and that stuff. So I'm not a hundred percent sure where we're at on that.
Okay.
I have another comment on that. So student council, beginning like service aspect, that was one of their projects. Cause Marlboro High School, their Stu Coe just did that and like created a station in the gender neutral, the girls bathrooms for that. But it was out of their cost. Like it was like funded by them. So like, it was, came out like Stu Coe dues, like you pay, is to pay for like the tampons that have to go into the bathrooms.
Are they not in there now?
No.
A couple of years ago, we went.
They're, they're empty. They've never had something.
Okay. Oh, they definitely did at one point.
Yeah.
Well, it never will happen. Never will happen there.
I've definitely seen them in there before, but people just don't, I don't, it's kind of just something that we've kind of ignored as females just kind of not like, like people are just more rely on bringing their own products. And it's, even if, because I think people will go and then if it's out, you're not going to try again.
You can't go back to the classroom, get something and come back. Like it's too long of a bathroom break.
And it needs to be like made full center.
Right.
But the student council in Marlboro, they did and it was really successful. They have like a lot of like, but it's still coming out of their own.
Do they have it at the middle school or no?
They have it now.
We, I have it at the nurse.
You have it at the, at the middle school? Middle school? Ruffin.
Oh, Ruffin, I have.
I will be happy to re-dive into this wonderful.
Thank you.
It's also, sorry, just another thing with the new phone policy. Because we're supposed to have, um, it's kind of changed, um, where people are starting to put their phones, like giving them to the teacher instead of the backpack policy. But with the backpack policy, it was kind of disruptive where if you wanted to take menstrual products from your backpack to the bathroom, you had to hand, yeah, you kind of had to announce it.
Can I get something from my bag before I go to the bathroom?
Yeah, or hand.
And like it had to be clear, like it wasn't like a vape or something.
Yeah.
And you took it out. So it was like a whole spectacle in front of the whole.
Got it.
And you put the bag in the front of the.
This feels so good.
It changed because certain teachers bought their own like phone holder thing for the doors. Like you put that and you could keep your bag next to you, which is much, much better for a lot of.
I think so, but it's also, and.
There are still some teachers where you put your bag up front instead of like make a whole thing of it.
If you want to take your backpack with you to the bathroom, you'd have to walk up to the teacher with your backpack, hand them your phone and go to the bathroom.
There's definitely been allegations, so it's much better than like the first week, but that first week was, was pretty rough for a lot of people.
It was also frustrating for students because that was not something that was, that was amended after we had started school and that was sent out in an email to um, all the girls, not even to everyone. So I'm sure there were some people who maybe they didn't make it on the list and.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
I don't think it's related, but I mean, it is related a little, but I will say that I am grateful to you guys for sort of like working through the kinks of the new phone policy because it's probably a pain in the butt and I think it's a really great policy in theory. So I, I appreciate that. Not just you two, all of you.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Mine, giving my phone, I mind not having access to my backpack.
Yeah, that was like overall people's.
I've heard that, but I have not heard the rest of it. So I appreciate you being.
Right, yeah.
About a sensitive issue publicly.
We will look into it.
I, I figured. All right. We're done with the resolutions. Everybody's in agreement.
No.
Okay.
No, I'm just happy we're done.
Yay.
And also let's break the stigma.
I mean, it's not a big of a deal for like the juniors and seniors, but I know it's fresh.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I would die and I'm fifty years old, so.
Juniors and seniors, they don't really care as much. It's like less of like a thing. And like middle schoolers, like I can't even.
I remember my purse spilled out, like middle school, ugh, terrible. All right. Order that.
I don't care.
Okay. Next up, the superintendent report. I wanted to call attention to this student rep. So you guys are here a lot later than you usually are and I apologize. I had asked that from now moving forward, that you hear the superintendent report and then you give yours and then you go. Just because I think it's important for you to hear what he has to say, as important as it is for him to hear what you have to say. So I just, I wanted to kind of see how that goes, but if it, if it starts to get too much later, then I'll flip it back. But um, please let me know if this is too late for you. You can just get up. This is too late for you. You can just get up and walk away and we'll just do you next time. Jay.
All right. Just a few things. I wanted to thank Chief Lenardi, Officer Alves and the Crafton Police Department. They helped us. Immenselyly with some traffic flow issues at the high school and high school. Last week, today met with the Worcester Health Alliance. It was in Worcester. Met with the Worcester superintendent, she was very superintendent and the team from the Worcester Health Alliance. They spoke glowingly about the work that Roseanne Karpaska is doing as a representative for Crafton, SEL Wellness. And we've got to look at the raw data from the most recent, it's the last year's. Health survey and, uh, you know, there's always work to be done. It wasn't zero stress. Everything's, you know, rainbows and sunshine, but. Real significant strides forward. I was. My fourteen years, it was the most positive initial report I've seen. Uh, so that was great. I wanted to just say thank you to the town for supporting the funding for the North Street Elementary School roof and siding. Emergency project over the modulators and around the modulators. Uh, that was voted on at last night's town meeting. Congratulations to the girls and boys cross country teams. They won the Swickel championship this past weekend. And along with that, the GMS girls also won and the GMS boys came in second. So. Couldn't be a more dominant, uh, showing there. And then lastly, thank you to our, uh, PTO, the volunteers and the staff for making Oktoberfest at South Crafton. Such a huge success. So thank you to everybody who chipped in.
I just wanted also, um, thank Frank and Kathleen for coming out last night's town meeting.
Yeah.
They were not needed, but it was nice to know that they were there just in case there were no questions.
Yep.
And so I echo your sentiment. Thank you to the town. Obviously we need a roof, so. Student representative report.
Yeah, so we have, uh, an exciting week. Um, we have homecoming week this week, so we have had our first two spirit days, um, today and yesterday. Which were pajama day and then today was red, white and blue day. And then, um, tomorrow is Jersey versus Jersey Shore. And then we have decade day and then we have class color day.
Um, so the homecoming dance is from seven to nine on Saturday. We are closing up senior nights that Friday with Friday in cheer. On football in cheer this Friday at six PM. We've had a can drive and penny wars going on this week. So can drive, if you go into Crafton Food Pantry and you get points, you're like. Grade if you donate as well as penny war, which is a class on every day where you donate coins for points.
And then we have the dodgeball, um, tomorrow at five PM where it's just a super fun event. There's going to be pizza there. Um. I think sign up is closed, but I think people can still come, right? Yeah.
Free entry for all students.
Awesome. And then, uh, we had our first, uh, mall UN conference last Saturday, which is our first of the year. It was at St. John's. I was in attendance. It was really great. Um, we had a pretty big turnout compared to recent years. And, um, everyone had a lot of fun. It was super great.
PSATs, SATs and college and career day and also college tours are October twenty ninth, so this Monday. Everything's already set up with guidance. You have to let everyone know and anybody, any of your counselors know if you're leaving that day for a college visit. And everything else should already be organized. So on power school.
I think it's the opposite. Actually, I think you have to let them know if you're not, if you are coming into school that day. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
For juniors, you have to let, for juniors, you have to let them know if you're not taking the PSA, if you're opting out of it and you're choosing to do college tours instead.
And then with the digital SAT and PSAT, uh, we had an assembly today where we got our testing tickets and you have to complete, uh, setup. On your Blue Book app on your iPad. There was issue with the wifi, so not everyone got to it, but if you don't have that set up. Um, before testing day, you can't take the test. And I know with seniors, we have a lot of deadlines coming up, so this may be the last SAT you can take before you want to submit your application. So just. Parents, please make sure to let your kids know to do this. It takes like two minutes maybe. Um, but if you walk in on test day and you don't have it done, you can't take the test.
That sounds awesome. Is that it?
That's all. Good job, guys.
Who's winning? Class worst?
Seniors, actually.
Actually.
Juniors are second for the first time. We've lost.
Yeah.
And we lost sophomore, so we're second right now.
We had a teacher encourage everyone today on the announcements for the juniors to give us more of a fight.
We've had a lot of student prestations spending like the eighty percent of people presting, which is way higher than all the other years.
Yeah, it's great.
Mrs. Austin and I were talking just before the meeting started about the, the fact that everybody in town who came to town meeting last night got to see the windows. And it doesn't normally line up like that. I don't remember a year where we came to town meeting and the windows were done. It was really neat to see everybody's reactions as they looked up and saw how great, I mean. The juniors and the seniors, obviously the senior window is just. Beyond. I mean, I've, I've been way in that building for ten years and I've never seen. A window done like that. It was really spectacular. And the junior window is, I love to see them progress. You know, the freshmen, they, they try and then the sophomores try a little harder and the juniors like, you guys really did a great job. But the senior window, I don't know how it's ever going to get topped. It's just beyond.
Yeah. I love it. Um, how in recent years you've been doing the photos of all the seniors. It's really nice. It's a great like homage to.
And the crowns were nice touch. I like that.
Yeah.
The kings and queens of the school. All right. Thank you very much. You're free to go. See you next month. Good luck. Go juniors. What?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm kind of, I feel like that's my class too.
It's not going to happen, but you know, who can help? All right, um. The, could any future agenda? Future agenda, um, so we're going to move the handbooks to the twelfth. Sorry, what?
Most likely the nineteenth.
The nineteenth. All right, good.
Maybe it's out on the twelfth.
Um, we lost, oh no, we have superintendent goals back. Oh, all right, nevermind. I didn't see it. The only other thing I wanted to mention is your timeline for the fiscal year twenty six budget. Our hearing is listed as March eleventh. I don't know if you want to keep it there, if you want to move it back to February. Or. Cause we can't approve the budget until we have that hearing, correct?
Correct.
So if you want us to approve it.
Push it back into February.
Any other? I still owe you guys dates. I haven't forgotten, I swear. For the student activity, student council thing. I'm sorry, I'm starting to fade and it's only eight thirty. Anything else on the future schedule?
My only question is that we, which isn't necessarily supposed to be on here, but, uh, do we have any progress on the student group meeting?
Oh, yeah, I owe you.
That what you were just saying?
Yeah, I said the complete wrong thing and I apologize.
Okay.
I owe you dates.
That's what she's saying.
Yeah. Um, and I did want to call the committee's attention to the fact that we do have two meetings in a row in November. Because of the election and when Thanksgiving is, it's a weird month. Um, I know in recent years we've only done one meeting in November and I just think this year we're too busy.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
When, um, curriculum, when the curriculum's coming.
She should be there next week. No, it's not.
Teaching and learning.
Teaching and learning, yes.
Will she be talking about Project Leadaway? Is it too soon?
Uh, she can definitely talk about it.
I'd love to hear more about it. If, if it fits into what she's, if it's not stressful. What was that?
I wouldn't say it's stressful.
Okay.
Thank you, Maggie.
Um, we do not have minutes.
Yes, people.
We do.
Twenty-fourth leg of the meeting and twenty-fifth, that workshop.
Policy workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the other one? The, the meeting the day before.
Yeah.
I apologize. Well, I'll be abstaining. I apologize. I totally did not see those until just now.
It's okay.
I'll take a motion on the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty fourth. Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the policy workshop on September twenty fifth. Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion? Seeing none.
Wait, what?
Okay, okay. If you start to whisper, I'm going to call on you. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Abstaining. All right. We have a couple of warrants.
Madam Chair. I moved that the committee approved warrant fifteen in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Carries.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I moved that the committee accept warrant number sixteen in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
I second that.
Motion made seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I am a financial report.
Right, that might be a list here. So your first quarterly report is before you. Um, you don't have any significant concerns at the moment. Just like last year, I expected to be very tight. Um, I think it will. I'm not worried about finishing the year, uh, to the good, but it, it's going to be close as it has been in the last couple of years. I can take any questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Any questions? Well, it's good thing we don't leave anything else in extended school year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Like that. Almost a curriculum, most of that stuff you're purchasing upfront. Even if it's not reflected, it was usually purchasing Q one.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. We appreciate it. I'm going to move on to policy.
Yeah. Before we get into policy, I would use the electronic packet versus the agenda.
Okay.
So apology, there was some timing changes. Um, so hopefully no one came to talk about ABC. Because I removed that.
Okay.
But, yeah, also, uh, so we were is not here. Um, so we'll just, if, you know, people have questions, e-issues. Let, let us know. Uh, or me know, I guess. Um. So I'm going to start with EB safety program. Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to rec, to replace our current Crafton policy with the current MASC policy, which is. Listed below in your electronic packet. Do they have that?
Yes.
Okay.
I second that.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So there's. Well, there's a question. Well, not really a question. I just want to make note to the school committee that because this is, this, we never had this policy, like it's, it's a total new policy, not one that. We earlier had switched over to MASC. This will require two readings. I just want to make sure that we're all on board with that. And then in addition to that, this policy references IHAM, which we do not have. And that's a, well, that's a new policy, so that's going to be reviewed.
Thank you.
Is that, um, health's education? When you say it's, when you're saying it's a new policy, I'm just.
I'm saying it's, it's new as, if you go back to my audit, it's, it's a policy we never had before. We have it now.
But it's not a new policy as in MASC just dropped it.
No, no. But it's going to be reviewed.
Thank you. I tried to catch all those, Christie, and I appreciate it. I'm going to make a comment. Um, and we'll bring that. We'll bring that in.
Oh, and great, that's, that's, that's one that you have to modify too.
Yeah, fantastic. Yeah.
Thank you, Christie.
Thanks, Christie. That's, thank you. Great, yeah. So as a, I'm sorry, as a, I should have to amend my agenda, uh, amend my motion as a first reading.
That's fine. Since Christie proposed it, then it's automatically seconded.
Amazing.
All right. Any other comments, questions on this? All right, seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving this as a first reading?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve EBC emergency plans, um, as presented. Second.
Motion made the second. Any discussion on this?
Mrs. Austin is going to say at the end of this. There's, no, it's the second, but it's EBCD reference is again another new policy.
Okay. See, this is where I totally was going down a rabbit hole. I tried to link them for reference, but that's fine. I will not, I will not try to explain my thinking, but that is absolutely fine. Um, we'll bring that as. But I was getting, yeah. It was getting crazy. So then I was like, how many do we need? Thank you, Christie.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
All right. Any comments, questions on this policy? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Okay, awesome. Okay. This actually needs to be a first reading. Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to present, uh, EE AJ motor vehicle idling on school grounds as a first reading. Second.
Motion made the seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Dr. Cummings, with this new policy, will you be installing no idling signage?
Yes. We, we have a few, but, um, yeah, I've. Talked, um, myself and Frank and Brockwell. Uh, we, we have a bunch of, they put on a bunch of new signs, which you may have seen. Uh, we need to add some speed limit signs and this, the idling sign at the schools that don't have.
Hundred dollars. Wow. We going to add a sign that says parents don't go this way? Can we add that?
All of us.
Maybe the sign at Melville Street, do not enter until two forty.
Any further comments, questions on this policy?
Just, I'll be changing the pronoun usage.
I'm sorry?
I'll be probably editing the pronoun issue with this and just bring it back, but it doesn't change the meaning.
Okay.
But I'll bring it back for a second reading.
Okay. All right, seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Aye. Great. Motion carries.
Great. Okay, um, EFC, uh, Madam Chair. I'd like to bring, um, policy EFC, universal free school meals, um, as a vote to approve. Second.
Motion made seconded.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
This policy doesn't even need a vote. We had this po, we had a policy of this before we switched over the MASC vote version. Doesn't need a vote. We have it.
Cool.
We might have some of these. We were like, you know what? If we need it, if we want to talk about it again, those can all talk about. Thanks.
The only thing, now that I question it, because I've, now that I've looked at it.
Yeah.
Is that, ugh, uh, policy, it references policy EFE. Which is a new policy.
Look at that. That's not even linked. That's a lot of MASC.
No, I have to link them. It's just Laura.
Yeah, they don't link on MASC.
It takes.
MASC.
Hours to do that.
Yeah, don't, don't link them, Laura.
No, I was trying to link them so you guys would have them so I didn't have to put them in the packet. I was like, actually a conscious thought and I noticed this thing and I was like, maybe I could just skip it by. No. We're kidding. Um, but we do need you. Okay, great. We'll bring that back.
But the other policies in, we don't need to do anything.
Awesome. Thanks, Christie.
All right, so you're going to just switch this out and bring EFE next time?
I'm going to bring in EFE next time.
Excellent.
I sure am.
So I need you to cancel your second and withdraw.
I withdraw.
All right, yes.
So then.
Do nothing.
Okay.
EFD.
EFD. This is, um, this was a new, this is one of the newer policies that came out in, um, when we had our policy subcommittee meeting. Um. It came out in December of twenty twenty-three. Um, so we're putting this in. I thought this was referenced somewhere, but I wanted to just get this in front of it. Um.
Madam Chair, before we even make a motion on this, we voted on this already on nine, ten, and then again on nine, twenty-four.
Jesus, what's wrong with me?
So that has already been approved by this committee?
We're doing real well. We're, we're ahead of the game.
Through it. It's so far.
We're ahead of the game.
I don't know. There might be something wrong with my memory. Okay, thanks, Christie. Um, okay. Um, and then we're moving forward to some of our, um, handbook ones. Um, we have. Excuse my language. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve GBED tobacco use on school property by staff members prohibited. Second.
Sorry, this just seems like one of those really obvious policies that shouldn't need to exist, but here we are.
I have a question about this one.
Sure.
Because it says.
Because it says, uh, blah, blah, blah. Like, use of tobacco products within the school building, school facility, and on school grounds, the school buses, at school-sponsored events, blah, 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 by individuals, including school personnel, is prohibited at all times, but the title makes it seem like it, this only applies?
There's another one. There's another one. There's another one.
But it's, well, I mean, anyone, right? So, I'll just, we brought, like, I was at Oktoberfest, and there was someone smoking, walking around, and I was like, I wanted to, like, crawl out of my skin because that's how I feel when people are smoking on school grounds. But, I, yes, and, but I, I just, not that, like, they're reading up, like, anyone can come to Oktoberfest, obviously, they don't have to read our handbook to do that. But I just wanted to make sure there was something that was like, this is actually just a legal period at school, regardless of who's doing it.
ABC.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, ABC, which is linked to the background.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So, this is the version that would go into, say, a staff handbook?
Right.
Correct.
I just think the wording is weird because it, it includes everyone, and it's like it's supposed to be specific.
It does, it does, I do notice with some of these policies that the, the verbiage of the policy itself is sometimes repetitive of the title. I think that's on purpose.
I mean, it's fine. I, I, I agree there should be no tobacco. That's fine.
I didn't love this policy because I think it's, it's worded weird, but...
Well, it's pretty all-inclusive, though. No tobacco, period.
Right, right. I thought it was like a law, like you can't smoke within five, like that's...
On school grounds.
You should have called the police. That's what, I wanted to call the police. I felt like, where's police there?
I literally was like, I gotta go say something, and I'm like, I'm just here as a citizen. Take a deep breath, find someone to talk to.
What's interesting about this is that it, it specifically talks about, not just school buildings or school grounds, it talks about the buses or even a school-sponsored event that's not on school property.
Right.
So, a field trip is a great example, right?
Yeah.
You can't take the kids to the apple orchard and, and, you know, go off behind the barn and have a smoke.
How do you get to that field trip? Or an electronic cigar or an electronic pipe.
Alright. Are there any other productive comments on this? Alright. Leora, we miss you.
Leora would appreciate that.
She would?
Also.
She would? Alright, is there any other discussion on this? Seeing done, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry I started that.
No, no.
No, good question.
Having a good time.
Okay. Alright, moving forward, I'd like to make a motion to approve GBGB personal security and safety.
Wait, we just did that one.
No, we didn't.
No.
Oh, because they're not in same order as the...
No, you're... Use the packet.
I'm using the alphabet.
Yeah, E, G comes after E.
Do we have a second?
Second. I said second.
Alright, motion made and seconded. Is there any other productive discussion on this policy? I'm hearing none. Hearing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Alright, uh, yeah, 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 yeah. Madam Chair. I would like to, um, bring this policy GBGE, domestic violence leave policy, as actually a first reading.
Yeah.
Yes, because we have the discuss, there's some discussion.
So, yeah, okay.
Whoa, 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 hold on. Motion made and seconded.
Yeah.
Do you wanna say anything?
No, I was, I haven't, because she...
Yeah, I, I don't, I was just questioning whether it's a first reading because we're just determining in this policy whether it's paid or unpaid, if I'm not mistaken, that's the one.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure, we, I went back and forth on this, so we can prove, we can do whatever we want. Um, and I'm actually gonna turn this over to, um, I think Mandy.
Sure.
Yeah, Mandy on this, just because we had some advice from council, and, um, Mandy had recommended maybe we should talk about it as a committee. So, if you wanna move in and it's fine, I just, I, yeah.
But there's a part of this policy that we have to alter that, that says whether it's paid or unpaid?
Right.
Yeah.
So, the note that is highlighted in yellow, um, at least it is in my version that I have in front of me, but the note at the bottom is essentially what it is that we need to discuss. I did reach out to council, and she essentially confirmed that it's up to you as a committee, us as a district, to determine two major factors within this policy. Number one is if the leave is paid or unpaid. And the second is whether we require the staff member to have exhausted all of their accrued paid time off prior to taking this leave. Okay, so, does that make sense? Do you want me to speak further to that? Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So, when you say exhausted, it would be like, you, obviously, you use everything, and then you need the additional fifteen days, but it could be who knows how much time ahead of that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Um, so, the question is, you know, does someone, in theory, come to HR and say, "I need this leave"? Is my response going to be approved, paid, paid admin leave, we don't touch your accruals? Or is my response going to be, you're going to take, you have five sick days remaining, you're gonna use those, and then, you know, ten more of these days go into effect? There's a whole combination of situations that could present itself, so we just need to have the policy clearly outlined, whether it's paid or unpaid time, and whether we're requiring them to have exhausted all of their accrued time before using it.
So, because this is a first reading, we could have a discussion tonight. Kind of feel out what we'd like to do, and then, maybe, I mean, we could change our mind if information comes out. Do you have a sense, Mandy, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but do you have a sense of what other districts do in this? Or is it, like, what are the factors that kind of go into this decision?
Um, well, so, we, we talked about it a little bit earlier today. I think it's easy for this sort of topic to become more emotional than many other reasons for someone to take a leave. But it's, it can be viewed really no differently than someone coming down with some kind of unexpected ailment.
Yes.
Um, that equally isn't that person's fault, um, and is beyond their control. I think at the bottom line, at the, at the end of the day, rather, we're in the practice of taking care of our staff, and especially should this present, situation present itself, we would make sure that the person is taken care of. Um, but I also think for the purpose of consistency, it's, you know, we should have the policy kind of clearly outlined that defines the steps I would take in that, in that situation.
Can I ask a question? Would, um, if we were to, I mean, regardless of whether we give it paid or unpaid, would this be something that someone could use, uh, to apply for days from the bank, from the...
I, I don't believe so. I think that's the reason that this policy... Yeah, I, I, I think that's the reason this policy would exist, is that it kind of exists separately from that. That's, that's my understanding anyway.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
My concern with exhausting sick time out first would be, in an instant, with, for example, the paras where if they've used all their sick time, at some point, they, their, their stipends might not be, might not be eligible. And I would hate for anything like that to happen where you were out due to something like this, and now you're not eligible for your stipend.
Uh, I, I agree wholeheartedly. For those of you who aren't as familiar with the language in the para contract, that's something that just came up in these, um, most recent negotiations. That in order to be eligible for your stipend, you can't have gone beyond your accrued time. Um, that is the only contract that has that language in there. And again, I don't view if someone has exhausted their time, so say, someone comes to me and says they need, you know, ten days of this domestic violence leave, they only have three days accrued. The seven additional days wouldn't be viewed as them overextending their accrued time.
Okay.
Madam Chair, it just feels though, if we were to say something like that, that would then have to be put in their contracts, like what you say here, and what is, that, that's a contractual...
I was gonna ask about that, if this is something that we would add into the contract.
In that case, yeah, we would impact bargain.
Yeah, but if we, if we made it so that they don't, then we don't have to touch the contracts.
So, don't...
So, if we make it so you don't have to have exhausted your sick leave, then we leave the contracts alone, or do we have to add something anyway because this is a new policy?
I definitely check with that, that one contract, we would definitely check. I don't know what I say today. We, we should check.
I believe, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I believe that this, anything relating to this policy has to go into the contracts. This is kind of like FMLA.
So, something we have to talk to share.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly speak with her about that because at the end of the contracts, we have small necessities. We have FMLA, so that might just be something else that we have to include.
If I can ask a question about, um, we kind of went through this when we were negotiating with the nurses about use of their sick bank and the disclosure. The disclosure, thank you. Um, what realistically the list of documentation of this, what realistically is the head of HR, would you expect to see before you granted the leave, or would you just kind of try to handle that retroactively?
I, I would, I would say, if, if this is the case that someone is dealing with, I would say the majority of it probably would be retroactive because my goal would be them focusing on healing and being at any kind of appointments that they need to be at in order to get to a point where they need to be. It would, it would really just be a conversation between myself and the individual, um, in terms of collecting documentation and things like that.
So, Madam Chair, I guess, I hate to think like this, but like, putting, the, the problem is if something hap- if Mandy's no longer here, we hire somebody who has a different, that we weren't here forever, so you're in a different, well, you know what I mean, like, I...
No, that's the purpose of the policy, right?
Maybe asking for just thoughts on, are people, and we can work out the contract logistics and things like that, and the wording to bring back to you, but are people in a, like, do you have a general thought on if we want it paid or unpaid? Because this is where, I mean, I didn't feel comfortable coming with a thought, like, we really wanted the opinion of, of all of you, so...
Well, let's, yeah, let's stick those questions separately, paid or unpaid. Personally, I, I'm in favor of paid.
I want to be in favor of paid, but when you put it in the perspective of, like, this person got a cancer diagnosis, this person had an abuse situation, one of them is paid, one of them is not, and that feels bad to me. I'm not gonna lie, it does feel bad. But I know we have the sick bank that they can theoretically fall back on, but there's no guarantees of that. So, for me, that, that's my...
Oh, that's true. And it does differ based on, yeah, too.
Yep, so that's me. Sorry.
No, there's not a simple.
I know.
So, we need language that says something like depending on the, like, depending on, like, salaried employees, that doesn't seem...
I know. No, it really doesn't.
No, no, you can't do that. That almost means you have to go with a, I'm looking at, I'm looking at our administrators.
Yeah, that's not fun.
I mean, I, I hate to say unpaid, but I, I agree that there's, it's not fair to have it be paid for some minutes and unpaid for others.
Yep. I mean, it sounds, it does have a finite limit, at, at least.
Yes.
Others, it, it could be, you know, whatever, any length of time, but...
And there may not be fifteen consecutive days either.
Right.
It could be, you have to go to court. So, that, that makes me feel a little better?
Yeah.
That it might not be, like, a half a month's worth of work?
Yeah, right, it could be an afternoon here and a, you know.
Okay.
So...
There's more work to be...
It sounds, it sounds like we, we also seem to agree, I think, on the, the second piece, which is that we don't want to have to have exhausted the sick.
No, I agree.
I agree. Don't, no.
Sick leave.
No, don't exhaust the sick.
So, that's one, we get you one answer.
Thank you.
The second answer is less
Yeah.
palatable, but I think we have to go unpaid. I think, maybe, we think about it.
Yeah, I think that we should allow Leora's thought on that as well.
Yeah, I know, I know she has strong thoughts.
Or maybe there will be some feedback from, from the community, from the staff.
Yeah, you don't have to make the, obviously, we're not making the decision tonight, so
No.
we'll come back with maybe some different suggestions, if you have thoughts.
This is the hardest one, I think.
The weird thing is that there are other towns that still keep it paid or unpaid.
Right, well, we noticed, Leora noticed that, that a lot of people just copy and paste, which we have certainly done and are guilty of, um, without those notes, and now we've looked at those notes more, so we'll be seeing some more of that actually coming up.
So, wait, so we don't have to require...
Yes, and the second one, no. First one?
We have to talk about that.
Okay, we're kind of mixed.
Well, I think it's tricky, and I, I think it's hard.
We'll do it.
Right.
So, do we, my, my understanding is that we vote to accept as a first reading so that you can continue, and then at the next meeting, we would discuss it again and maybe have some final...
Okay. Yeah. Actually, I'm not gonna ask this question.
Go ahead, go for it.
It just, it feels, I mean, it feels lucky to ask it, but is this our incident? If it happens?
Is it yearly? Is that what you're, like, is it a year, like fifteen days?
How often does this happen?
It says...
Well, it is, I think it's per month, yeah, I mean, per twelve months.
Yeah, yeah.
Once a month. Once a year.
Once a year.
I cannot speak. Thank you. Okay. It is, it's right there in front of me.
And, and maybe it would give you a piece of lines, too, that this is separate from FMLA? So, should there be a situation that I think we're all thinking of, a person could also be eligible for FMLA?
Alright, can we go to the other side, Becky?
I don't like this. I don't like it either.
Yeah, but this is a big one.
I know.
Committee making the hard decisions. Alright, all those, any further feedback? I'll be insensitive. But I wanna get off this topic. Alright, all those in favor of accepting this as a first reading? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Laura. And thank you, Mandy. Thank you, Puddy, for your call.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Don't you love, I'm all like, all about, I'm on policy, hooking me till it's hard, and then I'm bringing it in.
Well, I didn't want to...
That's how I play. Okay, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to bring, uh, policy GCRD to even for pay as a first reading. Second.
Motion made and seconded. I have a question.
Yeah.
So, this is brand new.
Well, it's in a, in a manual right now.
So, how is this enforced?
Direct conversation with people. It hasn't come up in, at least in my recollection, maybe in the last six, seven years, when it first existed, it was actually a thing that was taking place.
Okay.
What do you mean, it was a thing taking place? Those teachers tutor now?
Yeah, but it shouldn't, I mean, you can tell me offline if they're violating this policy. Tutoring is one thing, tutoring students, if you were a math teacher and you had Billy get some extra tutoring from you for pay after school in the library, that no longer takes place that I'm aware of.
So, do, do principals have a list that they can give parents and guardians of persons who are willing to tutor?
They do. The list isn't as big as it used to be. You tutor and just, maybe it's more privatized now, but a decade ago, there was an actual list of teachers who wanted to make some extra money. They'd go to the library and help somebody with math or something. The problem was if Bill, the kid, was in Mrs. Jones' math class, that was a big issue.
So, the last, the last bit, the note.
Yeah, so we're deleting that note. We, the notes in general, we have determined are for some people, subcommittees to take a look at, so it says, if I want me to undo my cross-out, or you don't have it on the...
Oh, I'm in the PDF. It's in, I'm sorry, am I not on that?
No, you're not, you're not. So, I, it does, the notes don't, yeah.
Alright, good to know.
So, we're crossing out that note. I'm sorry, it doesn't show up in the PDF.
No, it's okay.
Super annoying.
I just didn't know because the other, the last note was highlighted.
Yeah.
Pay attention to me, but this one is not.
This one should be, it will be deleted, yeah. Um, and that's because it was just advice for us. And I do believe we have tutoring rates in the contract, don't we? Yeah, so they tutor, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, well, the, right.
Right.
Tutoring rate, that, think of that as, um... Yeah, well, the, right, tutoring rate, that, think of that as, um, assuming who's been out.
Oh, right, right.
Sick, etc., that's not, Joey needs extra.
Right, right. And I will say, I, I do see parents asking on various Facebook groups for, for tutors a lot, and maybe they just don't know that they can ask principals.
As a, as a principal, I used to provide, I mean, like Jay just said, the list isn't as.
The parents should probably be asking their principals or teachers.
We, we would then reach out and say, hey, we have a, you know, a fourth grade student who's looking for help and such and such, and folks would volunteer, so.
I just, I, I always, I always cringe a little with that, because I don't need to know whose child is struggling and in which subject and.
Right, I don't feel that that list is known.
Yeah, maybe it's something.
Well, I don't, it could be one person, it could be zero people.
This is often, I don't know why this needs to be two readings, I think we can just do it.
I would love it.
Because if we had it, we still have it.
I would love that.
You want to amend your motion?
Sure, I'll amend this as, uh, review as presented.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, aye.
Great, thank you.
Motion carries. I'm gonna stop trying to cross off these things on my list, because. I'm not confusing you. No, um, it's, it's fine, I don't, you too, she's taking, she's keeping track of me too.
I'm keeping track, I get, I like, I under, I, yeah, the PDF thing is weird, but I, I always have a.
We're almost done.
We're almost, well, we're almost done. All right, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, present policy JLC, Student Health Services and Requirements, um, uh, to review, uh, to prove as, approve, approve as reviewed.
Madam Chair.
Are you seconding?
No, I'm not.
Second.
There we go. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go.
This was voted on, um, can we, we are, you proved it.
Hi, in that meeting?
Yep, you were there.
All right, all right, awesome.
Thank you. Motion withdrawn. That's okay.
Yeah, but you're not allowed to talk.
I appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks, Christie. Gee whiz. Okay.
New name, new policy, ooh.
Yeah, so, um, this is a new policy from, uh, MASC, um, I think, um, and I put our, well, hold on, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I would, uh, like to make a motion to, um, review IJ NDC, acceptable use of digital resources as a first read.
A second thought.
Motion made and seconded. Do you want to talk about?
I was just gonna say, I, um, I put our, currently, we have an old policy underneath just for reference, um, IJ NDC, so that would replace, um, we would like to replace it with the new MASC version. MASC came out with a new one, they revitalized it.
Nice.
There's no longer internet publication.
Right, it's totally different.
It's totally, yeah.
It should be a question. All right, any further discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Oh, this is something I'm gonna kill again.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I really, I appreciate the help, thank you.
The cross-references on this.
Do they need to be brought in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because these are brand new policies, that was all part of the December.
Oh, thank you, okay.
With the exception of JICJ, you want to approve that.
I'm pretty sure we did that.
Okay, but JDEE.
And KDC.
Okay, thanks, no, this is perfect, thank you. I just, it was like.
That KDC one drove me nuts because it's written incorrectly on their policy, it was KCD, and it's KDC, I was trying to, ooh.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the policy?
Thank you.
Seeing none, you ready, Laura?
Yeah, that's, that's what you meant by cockroaches, though.
All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, person carries.
Hold on, I just need to.
Okay, oh, wait.
No, it's fine, I just wanted to make sure. You know what, every time I leave, you're feeling confident, huh? Okay, cool. Uh, great. Now we have moved on to, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to approve policy IJOA field trips. Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So you're crossing off the note on this, brief policies on field trips, such as samples above, usually require school committee approved guidelines, but implementing regulations. We don't want to implement any regulations.
No, we do, and we, we do do that, we thought this was a note to us to just, um, so it says, brief policies usually require school committee approved guidelines and implementing regulations, um.
Not within the policy.
Not within the policy, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, not within the policy, so we, we kind of determine that these notes are for policy subcommittees as advice, and don't need to be put on our policy.
Do, where are these of the school committee approved guidelines?
Um, my, I guess my thought was what happens is we get AU, um, I don't know if we have guidelines.
Um, we, we, we just, I don't remember what we called it, guidelines are like in approval form, we haven't used it in a while.
Yeah, when we have a new, brand new, um, trip, which we don't have a lot of them, they have to come to us.
When Quebec came up.
Yeah, when Quebec came up, we had to approve it, and that's where the guidelines are, I guess, we thought.
You could include the basics, I mean, that.
I, I don't know if I would.
If you wanted to, I, I would not encourage us to start doing reference documents.
No, it's, I would not, and I guess to me, the regulations are in the policy as like number five, one through five, they have to have permission, they have to be supervised, they have to be observed, they have to be um, based on our curriculum, and then we have to be able to provide it to everybody regardless of their ability to pay.
So I, I don't, I don't have much of an appetite to be any, any more heavy-handed with this, I think educators should be able to send the trips, work with Jay. Obviously, if it's, you know, if it's a major, like I know years and years ago, they did a trip to the Galapagos, if they decided to bring that back, like I'd like to take a look at that before.
We have to, they come to us.
Yeah, but just because it's been a while.
Yeah.
It's not really a new trip, it's just, it's new teachers, it's new, um.
Right, but like when they brought back DC, they had to come to us. It wasn't brand new, but it had been stopped for years, when they brought back Major's Classroom, they had to come to us, it wasn't brand new, but they had to come to us.
And now they're gonna, I guess they're gonna change DC to be in the fall.
Yes, it's gonna be wonderful.
Which is totally fine.
Yeah, but they don't have to change the time, this gets the time.
There might be different stuff that they do, that's okay.
Right.
Yeah, okay with that, probably have a better time. All right, any other comments or questions on this? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, aye.
Great.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, we need Christie for this one, and, um, so, Madam Chair, um, I'd like to bring, I have to bring, I'm gonna recommend we bring IKF graduation requirements as a first reading. Okay, I brought this, it was on, um, Christie had highlighted it, um, and I thought it was because, and this was like, create, we had a blank, so it was on our site, but our site currently has in order to graduate from blank instead of grad, drafted high school, it was embarrassing. Um, but I didn't know if there was another reason why you highlighted it, Christie.
Yeah, the reason why I had brought this one to Dr. Cummings, to the attention of the board, is because it states on here, and I've exhausted MGL four years of physical education, which is true, that's, MGL requires that.
Yep.
Currently at the high school, they require three semesters of physical education, those are not the same.
I don't think that's real.
It's not, because of health.
It is.
No.
No, she's saying years versus a half.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying the health doesn't count as a physical education, it doesn't, it, no, it doesn't.
According to who?
According to MGL. It has to be an exercise. It says, it includes, I, I gotta find it again, like, military. No, there's another one that references that, that, that the kids have to get exercise, that they have to be offered an exercise, physical education class every year in school. I will find it.
All right, you wanna, in the, in the.
I'd like to hold that, yeah.
Why don't we hold?
Because often it doesn't have the MCAT in it, which.
Well, yeah, and there's another thing, ooh, I gotta find it. Um, in May, Dessie also added to this, that there needs to be five additional core courses, such as business, education, health, and/or technology. See, and they put the health in that.
Interesting. It does say, I will say that the first line complied with all state accountability requirements. It protects us if they change the state requirements, so I don't think that we're out of compliance um, in that respect. But we're gonna hold on this, you guys are gonna take a look.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good to me, yeah.
This was a last minute throw in.
Okay. I know people are gonna be looking at it now, no questions.
Right, 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 okay, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I would, um, like to, uh, recommend removal of policy JE, attendance K through twelve. Because we have another policy that covers it.
Yeah, second thought.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any discuss?
No.
Leave that, that's garbage. Okay.
Okay, that is garbage, okay.
Any further discussion? Uh, he none. You, this is what, all those in favor, aye.
Great, thank you, and then I just included it as, as a reference below, so we can skip into that, you're welcome. Um, okay, uh, policy JJH, oh, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I'd like to.
Sorry, can I go back to the reference policy, just so that we're all clear, the JH policy there that we do have, it has notes in it that need to be addressed in the handbooks, just so that.
Yeah.
Dr. Cummings is aware.
Can you read again the policy that you were moving on to?
We go around with JK.
Oh, mine says JK.
Yeah, mine says JK.
JK.
Should.
JK.
No, JJH.
What was I moving on to?
Um.
We might not quite be ready for JK yet. Just kidding. All right, hold on one second.
Mandy just shot you a look. It was a good joke, I left.
Madam Chair, just before we go on to JK, I just want to let everybody know, we've had JK, we have JK, we don't even need to look at this policy.
It's, JK there as a reference.
Oh.
We're not looking at it, but what I would like to look at is, do, do people have JJH in it?
No, that's, you just.
I just have it.
You just have it on your thing, that seems new, because I don't even have it from today when I looked.
That's weird. Never mind. You'll find out in two weeks. JK is there as a reference, because I think we talk about it at another time.
It's JKR.
Okay, yeah, because we're moving into JKR, so what I had here is JK's student contact, and, um, before I, I would like to pass this, Jay, you're up for this. Remember, we talked to you, we're gonna do this, because you said it so beautifully, so before I make a motion, um, Madam Chair, can I just have, um, Dr. Cummings give a brief overview?
Hundred percent, I don't remember what I was going to say, but I will.
You said it so beautifully, we're talking about why, why we want to remove the, the reference manuals, because we have JK.
That pretty much sums it up, so.
You said it nicer.
The specifics, they, we have it broken out by secondary and elementary, different levels, um, it's all lovely, I think we can actually make it a little bit better, but these pieces that are reference documents in existing policy should be moved into those, whatever we end up calling it, guidebooks or student handbooks. Um, so this stuff isn't going away, it's gonna be in there and findable, but apparently, I spoke brilliantly and Christie helped, um, guide that decision.
I wish I'd watched the meeting.
Madam Chair, I would like to suppose that we take these as a group.
Me too.
Sure.
Second.
Okay. You don't get to second it.
It's just the second.
You have to make the motion.
I don't have to make it, it'll have to be for me now.
Make the motion, Christie, go.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, I guess, delete. Recommend removal of JK's R one through four.
Second.
Wow, bold. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, so excited.
Thank you. Is that it, or is there one more?
There's more.
There's way more.
We're almost there.
I mean, that was, that was a lot of it right there that we just deleted.
A lot of pages.
It's a lot of pages, um, but we're going on, thank you. JIC, student discipline, there as a reference.
It's there as a reference, okay, yep, I see that.
Yep, I just. No, 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 just there as a reference, um, this is for you, Amy, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to, um, for policy JLCV, I would like to recommend moving to the current MASC policy, this is for administering medicines to students. Second.
Motion made and seconded, but let me just say that the reason Laura is bringing this to my attention is that, um, we attended a MASC conference session on this policy specifically a few years ago, where we learned that we're supposed to review it every two years. And we did that very year, so.
There you go.
There it is. But it's nice that we're gonna move to the MASC version, because it'll, we still have to look at it every two years, but we probably won't have to change it. Remember that year, the big change was Narcan.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions on this policy?
Madam Chair, so this is a first read, correct, because we're changing the first read.
First read, yeah.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Oh, hey, there it is. JICH, that's there as a reference, right?
This is by students.
But we did.
We already have.
Oh, you did this one, oh, I thought you were just comparing it to the one.
There's a reference.
No, I'm out, I got, we're done.
We're done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair, before we stop with policy, I have some bookkeeping. No, I know we were done, but we weren't, you just, you jumped in, you got on that. But back on the ten eight meeting, we had policy, some references, right, and those haven't been brought back. A couple of them, you have to, EBB and BEDG.
EE, sorry, did I?
EBB, it's first aid, yep, and then BEDG, it's minutes.
Say that again, sorry, Christie.
BEDG, okay.
BEDG.
Bring them, yeah. And then, on the nine twenty four meeting, we'd accepted policy JICJ, I mean, even start here, it's still not in the, the MASC manual.
Okay.
So that's gonna get back.
Okay.
And then one more thing, on the seven thirty meeting, we had taken policy CHCB, Faculty and Staff Handbooks as a first read, but it hasn't been brought back.
Is that, I think that's probably deliberate, yes?
Yeah, but, thank you.
Why is that deliberate? Pass the policy and that'd be a violation of it. But, good reminder?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thanks, Christie. Perfect, okay, cool, all right, I'm getting there.
We are nearly finished our meeting, although I, we are gonna have executive session, so.
It'll be quick.
Fun. Um, member reports, are there any member reports this evening?
Yes.
Yes, go.
Uh, yesterday, it seems like a thousand years ago, but yesterday, uh, I attended the Wellness Committee meeting, the second one of the year, which is great, it's already going strong, it was, um, productive, we had some students come and talk, um, one of the issues that was brought up, which was somewhat not related to the meeting, but it was about, um, the recycling slash non-recycling in the schools, that all goes in the same dumpster, and students were very concerned. So I wanted to bring that up, um, and other than that, the meeting was really, really positive, and, um, I'm just really glad to be on that committee.
Thanks. No, they, she's first.
Oh, okay, I have, um, a couple of updates, I went to the, um, book study that the district is doing, um, on, um, the anxious generation. Um, it was very well done, I kind of wanted to read that book, um, to kind of help inform our policy, especially about phone and mental health. Uh, it was wonderful also to connect with some of the younger parents, and, um, it's been run by Mr. Wiltshire and Ms. Flynn, and it was very, uh, eye-opening, and, um, I'm looking forward to diving in more, so I'm grateful for that. I also volunteered at Self-Crafteds Oktoberfest, and was very excited to get to volunteer in the Hope Garden, um, which is part of the Yellow Tool Project, which is a nationwide project. Um, and it talks about how yellow tulips are the flower of hope, and it's basically. I also volunteered at, um, South Crafton's Oktoberfest, and was very excited to get to go on here in the Hope Garden, um, which is part of the Yellow Tool Project, which is a nationwide project, um, and it talks about how yellow tools are the flower of hope, and it's basically, um, designed to be a collaborative effort that brings students, teachers, and parents together to help, uh, talk about mental illness, and, um, sowing seeds of hope and resilience, so we had, um, kids come and plant the bulbs, and also write a hope, um, and it's a good way, especially down at that age level, to, um, talk about, um, mental health and, and, uh, social emotional learning, and I, it was, it was an amazing, um, three hours, as, as Dr. Cummings would say, it was the best three hours of my week, I also got to work with, um, Katie, the adjustment counselor, um, I did try to subtly nudge if she could maybe come in, she said she was, that wasn't something she was comfortable doing, but, um, it's an amazing project, if you get a chance, um, go down to South Crafton, and, and we have some bulbs left, you could talk to, uh, Mrs. Wallace, and plant, and I can't wait to see them this spring, um, it was wonderful to see there, and again, also, I wanted to connect with some of the younger parents, um, and do some awareness about some of our budget issues.
That's a good idea.
I'm fun to hang out with.
Have you met my friend, the Uber ride?
Uh-huh, yep.
Listen, yeah, Madam Chair, I went to Oktoberfest, if my children ask, we put a hundred raffle tickets in every basket, um, I've also met with Mr. Covert at the middle school, he's going to be running another trivia fundraiser night, he'd like to run, so we're, we're going to do a movie trivia night this time, themed to family movies, and that, we're going to have that on November thirteenth at the middle school, there'll be pizza, hopefully popcorn, I don't know, and then, I got to meet with Patty Keller over at the high school, and see how robotics team is doing, that's quite an amazing thing. She wanted to extend her thanks again to Dr. Cummings for funding an organizational cart, which is as another, somebody who loves Legos, I will tell you that that organizational cart, that's amazing, it's great, it is, so thank you to Dr. Cummings for that. And a huge thank you to a past student, I'm wishing he was last name, his first name is Michael, he was from the class of two thousand and nineteen, he's been coming in to help Mrs. Keller on Saturdays with the robotics team, out of the goodness of his heart.
That's excellent.
He's a lovely man, and so he's been helping out. Been helping out, I don't have his last name, but his first name is Michael.
Cool. Awesome.
I have something else, I know, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Um, not this Friday, the November first is the, uh, second, I believe, Project Friendship Middle School Dance for fifth through eighth graders, and I did reach out to, um, one of the organizers, because I know it's pretty well publicized at the middle school, but I was having a really hard time finding information about it for students in elementary school, and I put them in touch with principals over at the elementary school, so we can like, make sure that students are really able to find that information, um, and it really, I, I think it just really helps students feel confident going into middle school, if they've already sort of started crossing those little bridges, so, anyway, I'm excited about that, and it's even very Halloween costume, so, nothing wrong with that.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing too, um, I, uh, is, uh, we talked about, uh, the career day coming up, um, next week, and I will be participating in a panel, so if any, uh, students are interested to know what it's like to be in public relations and communications, they will sign up. I'm looking forward to that. Looking forward to that. I thought it was, she said Monday, I thought it was Tuesday, so I'm going to have to confirm.
It is Tuesday.
It is Tuesday.
Okay.
It is Tuesday.
I did the MASC learning lunch on the resolutions, which was okay, um, now that Christie has seen it, she's saw me speaking up about the wording on one of the things that was wrong, that's okay. People were confused by the resolution for the MCAS and what question two actually is, so I was happy to help out, um. I also met with Mrs. Keller, um, they're going to do a mock election at the high school, but not on election day, because there's no school. She asked me to put her in touch with whoever's in charge of the voting stations, um, to see if they could borrow a few, to make it kind of as realistic as possible, um, for the, for the students, the majority of which will be unable to vote, um, this year, but, uh, it's nice that they're, they're going to do something like that, um. I'm hoping it, it goes well, and that students kind of get a sense of what it's really like, uh, to do that. So, and yes, member reports are done, uh, there was one piece of correspondence in the drive, it was just the teachers union reaching out to me, asking to be on the agenda, we already took care of that, um, we do need to go into executive session.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, for the committee to go into executive session to, uh, conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel um, in regards to open meaning law GLC thirty A twenty one.
Second. Motion made and seconded. We will return for just adjournment only. All those in favor?
Vote call vote.
Oh, that's right, thank you very much, we need a vote call vote. Mrs. Kilwitzki.
Aye. Aye.
Mrs. Austin.
Aye.
And myself.
Aye.
Thank you, Crafton.